Can people get a copy if they want prior to town meeting?
Once you approve it, I'll give it to the public.
Because I had somebody request it, they wanted to be up to date on it.
Yeah, once you know what articles, it'll be public.
Okay. Good evening, Board of Selectmen meeting of Monday, April 6th. At about 6:07, 6:08, like to call a meeting to order. And as always, we stand to say the Pledge of Allegiance, so if you'd like to join us, that would be very nice. Thank you. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Usually, we start out with resident public comment. We have people here this evening, I'm sure, that would like to take part in that. I have an idea, maybe I don't know everybody in the room, but people are concerned about this document being sent out to every taxpayer's household. Mike Dempsey is here this evening. He is the Chair of the Conservation, he's the Chair of the Community Preservation Committee. And Mike dropped this off about March 19th to Denise because they are required to let people know what's happening with the CPA projects. So, we didn't see at this Board of Selectmen. We didn't read, we didn't know about the content. And last week, I think, members of the FinCom had this, I hadn't opened it. And there is another group in town that has their own ideas on CPA and how it should move forward. We did not intend to make it them against the other group. That was not our intent. We're waiting for campaign finance to get back to us with some opinions. This printing and the mailing was paid for by the Community Preservation Committee. Is that right, Mike?
Printing.
The printing.
Is that legal?
Excuse me?
Is that legal?
I believe it is legal.
Yes, it is.
No, according to, okay.
Mike, we just wait a couple of seconds and then I'll let everybody hear it. But this was not endorsed by the Groveland Board of Selectmen. As nothing has been endorsed by the Groveland Board of Selectmen regarding the upcoming warrant. We haven't voted on any of these issues. As I say, Mike did ask months ago if he could do this, and I believe he's done that in past years. Is it every year you do that, Mike?
Almost every year.
But it is required by Mass General law that this happens. I know there are people that serve on your committee that felt like they were not asked about this going out. Do you just do, do you poll your committee and ask, did this, did they have to vote on, you took a vote?
As I remember, it was unanimous.
It was unanimous?
And send out the yearly newsletter.
Okay. Well, I'm gonna let people here who'd like to make a comment, we're gonna try to keep it till three minutes apiece if we can. Fifteen minutes, we have a big agenda tonight, I'm sorry. We've got all sorts of things going on, we'll probably be here till 10:30 or so. Who would like to say something, Mike?
First of all, Betty, I've talked to a couple lawyers, according to them, it's not legal. Second of all-
Excuse me, Mike, would you just, can you stand, oh, identify yourself in your address?
Mark McCabe, 16 Bear Hill Road.
Okay.
Five years ago, I had told Denise back in December what I was gonna do, I was gonna write this thing up and everything. I was in there with two other people in the office. And I had told Denise, and I remember exactly, I said, "Five years ago, they had done this before." But what they did was, they did their own separate mailing with town employees, folding them on town time in an envelope with town, I don't know who paid for the stamps, but they did it in a separate thing. And you had said to me, "That was not right." Now, this time here, they stuffed it in our envelopes. Who's paying for the extra, the extra weight on, after you figure out all the mailings and everything? The extra weight on, for the, how come no one ever asked me? I can't have a rebuttal and put mine inside there, you know?
I understand what you're saying.
Let's face it, this is ridiculous. I mean, they're getting away with murder on this. And I don't believe that Joe doesn't know nothing about it, he's on the CPC. You knew nothing about this letter Joe going in and mail-
You asking me a question?
Yes.
I know that the law requires that the CPC, required by Massachusetts law, sends out a newsletter. It's required by law.
Isn't it convenient, the time of the year, it comes out right before the election?
You're asking me a question, and I'm gonna answer the question, Mike. We didn't endorse the letter, we didn't see it in advance. Betty was very clear on that. You're asking me a question, I'll answer it again. The CPA tax is a tax paid by the taxpayers. The CPA therefore funds that newsletter. That newsletter is required by law to go out. Now, when it ended up in the tax bill, it did not cost any more postage. So, a tax, excuse me, a newsletter that's required by law, that's paid for by, in this case CPA, tax money, can go in another mailing as long as it doesn't cost-
So, a newsletter, right?
More, as long as it doesn't cost more postage.
No, no, you're saying they sent out a newsletter, do you think that's the right-
I've seen the newsletter before over the years.
You think that was, you think that was a wise thing from the do? After I spent three Saturdays in February, going out in the cold weather, getting all these signatures, why we should go from three to one?
I don't have a comment on the content, I'm asking, you're asking me a question, I don't have a comment on the content.
Mike, you brought your petitions into Town Hall to be certified, your signatures?
Yes. Before I was in Flora, that was back in the middle of March.
Okay.
Well-
Excuse me, Mike, Joe had his hand up.
I just wanna say, I think campaign finance and ethics aren't gonna like this when I talk to them about it, being the district attorney, that's all I'm gonna say. You don't wanna do nothing about it, fine, just let me know.
We do have, we have a call to campaign finance, absolutely, we do.
District Attorney's Office, campaign finance also.
The thing I will say about it, and I said it earlier-
I think it's dirty.
The thing I'll say about it is that a newsletter, a newsletter from the CPC should be a newsletter. And my opinion was, when you get, when you zero in on a 3.1 and then there's another opposite on the other side, and you don't give that other side the chance to talk, I agree what he's saying. And what I'm saying to you is, if we do this newsletter next time, it's my opinion, number one, that we should bring the committee, make a committee like we have Candidates Night. We have candidates, they come in, they talk, and what have you. No more next year, when this kind of stuff comes up, we should have a night where Mark's side will come in, the other side will come, Mike's side will come in, they'll come into a room, people wanna come hear it, they hear it, and that's the end of that, I mean, I just think-
It's just conveniently, five years ago, when Joe Ryan went out at 78 years old and collected 305 signatures, three days before town meeting, 'cause he asked to have it eliminated. So, to have it eliminated, it had to go in front of town meeting. Three days before town meeting, they had people stacking the envelopes and sending a mailing out to everybody. It wasn't that convenient, how come this newsletter doesn't come out in July? How come it doesn't come out in September? It has to come out right before town meeting.
Thanks, Mike. Did you have your hand up, Michelle?
I think Joe had his hand up first.
Joe Ryan, 865 Salem Street. In 2010, I turned in 301 signatures, certified. And the town meeting was for 4/26. And on 4/22, I got a phone call, it was on a Thursday morning. Told me that all day Wednesday, that's all he did in the Town Hall, was stuff a separate envelope just with that pamphlet in it, to sway the vote. That's three days before the town meeting. I come see Greg LaBrette on a Friday, he says, "Yeah, I'm not a man of Joe," and this and that, you know, they're big, so long. Hey, you gotta live with it, or else I'll take a shot. I lost.
Betty's a little bit soft spoken, Betty's a little bit soft spoken, but I'm gonna repeat what she said. If you people did not come in today, we would have already taken, we would have taken the action that we did. We've asked for the campaign finance to give us an opinion on the timing, on the mailing, and on the content. So, if you guys didn't come in, which we appreciate that you come in, you have a right to your opinion, we have already taken action as a Board of Selectmen to have the matter looked at and to give us the guidance for corrective action if there is such.
I wanna hear the results in three or four days, or I'm going to the newspapers too. I already have gone to the newspapers, okay? I'm not going away from this, Joe.
We were trying to get, we were trying to get-
It's the second time it's happened, I'm not going away from this.
We were trying to get an opinion by tonight, we missed it.
Okay.
So, it should be fairly quick.
We're not from who?
Just from who, them?
You can repeat it again?
No, we're gonna, we're getting an opinion from campaign finance.
Campaign of political finances. They say you can't spend the money, it's right here. I had it printed out.
You're looking for.
I worked hard, I was 78 years old when I did that walk that winter.
I understand.
And I got beat, I shook Mike's hand, 'cause he was at my house the next day, and I congratulated him, right, Mike?
Yep.
I don't hold a grudge.
You weren't gonna do this again.
This is standard procedure.
You wouldn't do it again, I did it, I did it.
This is dirty, this is dirty politics, I'm sorry. She, I told Mike to walk, to go talk to Denise and don't let it happen again. It's not funny, Joe, this is not funny, this is serious.
I'm not laughing.
I told Mike to go talk to Denise, it's gonna happen again, he laughed at me. I said, "Mike, go talk to her," and he did. And it happened again.
Do I agree?
I got a phone call, I told you, he said, "What are you talking about? Your tax bill?" I said, "I haven't got it yet." Next day, I saw it in there, you gotta be kidding me, again, they did it?
I got two, I got two tax bills, well, I got two of them.
I agree that everybody should have a level playing field. You know, when you go out and you go, it's not easy to go door to door. Go to, stand in the plaza and say, "You from Groveland, how do you feel about this?" It's just not an easy thing to do, I know it's hard work.
Campaign act, why can't Mike come campaign and we come campaign? We were given that opportunity. He brainwashed the peoples by mail, the whole town he covered. You know, we only got one.
If I have to do it, why doesn't Mike write a check out of his own checkbook, like I have to, if I have to do it? Instead of spending the CPC money, CPA money like it's Monopoly money.
Mike, would you like to speak?
Yes, you know, I would like to answer these questions. Plus, note that I don't appreciate being referred to like, "This is my project, this is my," this is put out by the Community Preservation Committee. The Community Preservation Committee is an official town committee, okay? So, that means that, as far as I know, any official town committee gets to communicate with town, they have an obligation, in other words, to communicate with members of the town. We at the Community Preservation Committee take that seriously. That's why the newsletter comes out this time of year. This is, this is nothing new. You think that this only came out in 2010 and 2015? Because somebody had some great conspiracy, that we knew that Mark McCabe was gonna circulate some kind of petition against it, we didn't know that. We put this newsletter out just about every year this time of year.
At the same time?
This time, it makes sense, Mike, because this time of year is when people are gonna go to town meeting. We need to publicize the projects that have brought before us, okay? So, there's the answer for that. As far as campaign finance is concerned, you're gonna find out that they have no problem with this. I will forward Denise the same exact documents that I got from them regarding the same issue that was brought up in 2010. Campaign finance doesn't have any problem with it, because again, it's a town committee and we're informing the voters on the thing that they're gonna be voting on.
Okay, well, Denise is waiting for information from them.
Yeah, sure.
She'd hoped to have it before tonight, she had hoped for it.
Sure, I'll send her what I have too. And then the other thing about the other side being represented, well, unfortunately, and I don't think that Mark will believe this, but I didn't know that Mark was putting anything forward. I heard that there were some general questions about 3%, 1%, what's the difference? So, I researched the topic and that was put in there too, to keep people informed of what it is. The article about 3% versus 1% doesn't say, "You must vote for the 3% or go against the change to 1%." What it talks about is what the true cost is of CPA the way it is. Is it a value to it? Does it have value and is it affordable? That's all it talks about, it doesn't say anything about, "You should vote this way" or "You should not vote this way." None of these articles do. I am totally aware that the town doesn't get to put political agenda items in town's paper documents. I wouldn't do that, the Community Preservation Committee wouldn't do that, so.
By the way, they just got a document this week, the CLC, and the matching funds next year expects to be 18%.
Thank you, Mike. Michelle.
Michelle O'Keefe, 15 Benham Street. I represent Finance Committee and Community Preservation Committee. Want to state for the record that I do not recall any vote being taken. I did not see this piece of paper before me on CPC, before it was mailed out. Do not wish to have my name affiliated with this in any way, as I did not have a vote on this, to have any of this information being circulated. I can see the point of having information circulated, but the piece that's up for discussion, I can't take an opinion stance one way or the other, as I am on CPC. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle.
Can I just say one thing?
Bill wants to speak, Bill Dunn.
Mike, in what you just said, and I'm not trying to take a bias to this at all, I'm just trying to take an objective to it. If the projects were put on here, the seven projects were put before the town and you wanted to go out and educate the town with those seven projects, I wouldn't have a problem with it. When there's an opposition on the other side, you know, that's all I'm saying, if there's an opposition, and you could say there's an opposition toward each one of your projects too, but, I mean, I think this was a bigger opposition on the 3.1, you know what I'm trying to say? It's just, I would have rather seen the newsletter go out basically on a project and discuss the project. Okay, we're gonna swing sets, we're gonna, we're gonna do the art, you know, just that subject, not more informational, I don't know, I think this is a little, for me, it was a little bit more informational needed to get, that's all I'm saying. I would have rather seen projects and only projects.
I have no problem, if the people want 3%, that's fine, Mike, you know what I mean? I just did something I wanted to do, because Whitestone Village over there, I talked to, how many people, they're fed up with the taxes over there, the condo fees, and they can't afford it no more. And these people, I don't think I had one over there that didn't sign it, you know? And that's fine, if the people want the 3%, it's not gonna break me. But I mean, there's a lot of people it is gonna break, and somebody just wanted a break on their taxes, and I just figured this is something, how I'd help out, especially once going down the 18% match.
Do you have that in writing, that it's being, going down to 18%?
It was sent out as an email to everyone on the Community Preservation, Kathleen Furnia, 7th Avenue Room. It came from the Community Preservation Coalition, and it goes to all members of the Community Preservation, so the members in this room should have all received it. And it said that it's going down to 18% FY 15. And that the only way to overcome that, and then I have to change my glasses to actually see what I'm reading. It's a record low estimate, is a result of a decline in collections at the State Registry of Deeds over the past 18 months. And the only way to overcome it, if the legislators once again vote to transfer state surplus funds. I think a member of the Finance Committee pointed out that the state is in debt. So, surplus funds are probably not gonna be floating around.
Thank you, Kevin.
So, an 18% match is what's hoped for.
What's the match now, 60? What did we get from that?
30.
See, we get more because we have 3%. Because we then qualify for the second and third rounds of funding. So, two years ago, the average was about 50%. Groveland got 100% because we qualified for the second round and the third round. So, what they said in that letter is, barring any action by the state legislature, the first round may be 18%, but we would qualify for the second round and the third round. So, that's why typically, the last few years, our average match has been about 62%.
I'm gonna have to wind this up, 'cause we've got all sorts of people coming in, and I'm gonna let Joe Ryan finish.
I'd ask Mike a question, you had a comment about the pamphlet for 2010 and the pamphlet for 2015. Have you got a copy of the pamphlet for 2011, 2012, 2013, 2014? There's no opposition then, so, where's that pamphlet? I've never seen it.
I've never seen it either, never got it mailed.
I mean, it's just when you have competition, then you put a pamphlet out, is this it?
No, that's not true, I'll get it too.
That's all I wanna know, you know, it's, I wanna play on a leading field. I don't like playing on hills, I'm getting too old, I want a level field.
Mike, can you get those to Joe, please?
Pardon?
Joe, Mike's gonna get those other years when there was no competition between 1% versus 3%.
Did you notice, I don't see a date on any of them.
Just a, just a procedure, maybe Denise can help us with this. If we get a determination from the campaign finance, we have a meeting tomorrow night, we have executive session Wednesday, and then our next regular meeting is April 21st. How do we communicate that information to the public? Can we do it in between meetings?
Well, I mean, this board, if there's something to, I mean, I can certainly send Mark a copy of whatever I get from campaign finance.
Is the petition that Mike circulated going to the ballot box?
Yes, I received confirmation from Town Council on April 2nd.
That will be on the ballot, Mike?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I know that.
Okay.
Yes.
'Cause I, Joe told me, actually, someone on the Finance Committee, he's not there anymore, actually said to me, "Don't try to eliminate it, 'cause if you eliminate it, it's gonna go right to the town meeting and they'll just, they'll bring them all in and I'll be done." So, try to go down to 1% and then it just goes to the ballot. You know, like I said, Betty, if the people don't want it, that's fine, you know what I mean? If they wanna keep the thing at 3, 3, but this is something I wanted to do. And when Bill was running for Selectmen, I had said, and I asked, I'd asked all the candidates, I said, I was, in the wintertime, I was gonna do this, and that's what I did. And believe me, I don't know if I'd ever do it again, it's pretty hard getting, you don't think it's a lot of signatures, but they wanna talk to you?
Well, I know it's a lot of signatures.
You know what I mean, yeah, I mean-
How many did you get?
247.
Yeah, I think I had like-
Was certified.
I had like 17 or 18 that-
Yes, that didn't qualify.
They were registered, but they were like in writing and-
Yes, so 247 were accepted by the town clerk.
We need to all watch and then all the talking and getting all the sign, and they turn in and you got 28 unregistered voters.
I get, I know, I know the feeling, they just say, they don't wanna tell you they're not registered.
It wasn't quite the easiest, went to two of some of the walkways that weren't filled, you know?
Right, it wasn't, it wasn't good out there. Thank you all for coming in, appreciate it. Thanks for everybody's comment.
Are you staying? Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, I don't know if you wanna hold off on the appointment till later?
Right, is this gentleman from?
Yes, this is Michael Nelligan, he's a partner with Powers &amp; Sullivan.
How are you?
Mike, thank you.
Thank you for being with us.
Is it okay to sit right here?
You certainly can, identify yourself for everybody that is at home watching.
Okay, this is- No, it's fine, okay. My name is, again, it's Michael Nelligan, and I'm a partner with Powers &amp; Sullivan, CPA firm. We're in Wakefield, Massachusetts. And I've been associated with the town's audit here since 2005. And we just finished up about two months ago. Excuse me, I'm sorry. Okay?
That's okay.
And I understand you've gotten the reports and had a chance to look at them, and I don't know how you wanna meet or run the meeting here, whether you wanna ask questions, or you want me to take you through the statements, or how you'd like to do that, but, so you tell me, I know the time is limited, so.
Can you give us an overview, and then I'm sure there'll be some questions? I don't think you have to go through everything.
Okay.
It just point out where we might be exceptional, or where we might need to do a little bit better.
Okay, that's pretty easy. The financial statements are really two components. And this thicker book, it's about 63 pages long, 65 pages long. It's the audit of the financial statements of the town. The town is required to have a financial statement audit, and it's also required to have a single audit under A133. In years where it spends less than $500,000, which has been the case every year, only the last two pages of the report in this 65-page booklet are required. And it's an internal control report that basically says that you weren't required to have a full, single audit done, but that we did look at your internal controls in conjunction with our A133 Yellow Book audit. And we give an opinion on the internal controls related to those federal grants. You did get some federal grants, about $55,000 worth, and we didn't really have any issues with those. We do have issues in the management letter, which is a separate document, which I'll come around to. But for the financial statements, they're fully compliant with generally accepted accounting principles. The audit went smoothly, we got full cooperation from all the departments that we worked with. We had no significant adjustments this year, and I put that in quotes, this year, relative to the town's books and records, except to convert those from a modified cash basis, which is what you do on a budgetary basis, to the full accrual gap basis. So, we do have some entries to book those kind of things. They're all GASB 34-related items that you may have remembered from back in 2003, when GASB 34 came out. What you had for the year, you get pretty good results. You have positive fund balances in the entity-wide statements, which is a good thing. A lot of communities are going negative because of the post-retirement benefit accruals that are being made. And I can talk about that if you have any questions about, about that.
Denise has talked to us about that, and we have to get on board and find a way to put that monies, to deal with post-retirement. We have people, I'm sorry, Mike, we have people from Finance Committee that are with us too tonight, so, can you hear Mike?
Yes, yes, thank you.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Okay.
In case anybody interrupts you.
Do you want me to talk about OPEB real quick?
I would.
I think so.
Yeah, okay. Other post-employment benefits includes health insurance and life insurance, basically, for all retired employees. That you're required to accrue a liability for that on your financial statements, starting back in 2009. You're compliant with that aspect of it, but you haven't funded anything. There's only a handful of communities in the state that are funding that plan, and only about three of those that are funding it significantly. The rest are putting monies aside as they can budget for them. So, what I recommend to my clients is, if you're gonna start funding it, don't really pay attention to the actuarial studies, 'cause they're gonna tell you you need to put in a big number that you probably won't be able to afford. But if you can pick a number, whatever it is, 50,000, 75,000, 100,000, if you start funding it with that kind of a level, even if it's 25,000, you start to build up some cash in that fund, and then that starts to earn money, and it helps you down the road. But I see a lot of people that they get hung up when they get devaluations from the actuaries and it says you need to put in 700 or 800,000 dollars, and that's not affordable for most communities, so they tend to do nothing. I think that some of the forward-thinking communities are starting to say, "Listen, let's budget something and put something in," and that would be my recommendation along those lines. I wouldn't try and stay up with that funding. Groveland has, you know, a relatively small employee base, but it's growing, and this liability is a real liability, it's not gonna go away. And I think a good faith effort to put something towards that is prudent for most communities. But it's not required, pensions are a little more important right now, but I think legislation will come through eventually that combines those two in some respects and asks you to start funding those.
Do you have a recommended dollar amount that we should put away?
No, I don't. I really couldn't comment about the number, but if you've got money in reserve funds or things like that that you can afford to put away, it's, anything is better than nothing. But I wouldn't try and do something that's unaffordable, because it's really a liability that's gonna be there for forever, until something changes with the employment laws, which I don't see that's gonna happen very soon. So, the financial statements, you didn't issue any new long-term debt this year. You just issued a ban for $140,000 for the sewer. And you spent money on school and infrastructure on the governmental side of about 1.2 million. And the enterprise funds, the water sewer, and primarily, the electric department spent about $780,000 on their infrastructure assets. So, the financial statements go through a management's discussion and analysis upfront, which takes you through, well, first is our opinion. Our opinion is a clean opinion, which means that we didn't have any modifications that would indicate that it wasn't prepared in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. So, you have a good, clean opinion, that's the best opinion that we can give. That, our opinion is followed by the management's discussion and analysis that goes through a whole bunch of different aspects of the financials. We assist with developing and writing that. Most of the details comes from management, but we- We assist, uh, with, uh, developing and writing that, um, most of the details comes from management, but we kind of help format that report. The financial statements follow that, and they're at an entity-wide level required by GASB thirty-four, and then a fund level, and then a budgetary basis back on page fifty-three, which is reported as required supplementary information, and that gives you a, uh, sort of a summary of how you did on a budgetary basis. You, you had an excess in revenues of a couple of hundred thousand dollars, and, uh, you didn't spend all of your expenditures to the tune of about a hundred and fifty thousand, I think the number was, after encumbrances, and based on your budget, those numbers are right in line with where you should be, so if, if you budgeted, um, well, I'll just flip to page fifty-three for a second. You budgeted thirteen point, um, thirteen point six million in revenue, you collected thirteen point eight, so you were two hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars above budget, and on the expenditures, you budgeted fourteen point five million, you spent all but eighty-two thousand of that. So as, on a percentage basis, those revenue surpluses and, and expenditure, um, differences are right in line with what, what you budgeted. You came out within less than a, a percent of what you, uh, budgeted back at town meeting a year earlier, so I would, I would consider those amounts to be right on what your plan was, and right in accordance with that plan. So, that's the financial statements, if, are there any specific questions, I'll be more than happy to, to talk about those, but there's a lot there, and we certainly won't get that done tonight if I go through every page, but I'll take any, any particular questions if you want. And then on your management letter, this is a little more problematic, it's not the straightforward, clean, uh, uh, report that we, that I talked about on the financials, you have material weaknesses, and, uh, material weaknesses are the worst kind of management comments that we can issue, we're required to issue in writing what we call, uh, material weaknesses and significant deficiencies, and those are, in our judgment, they're, they're classified based on our judgment, that the auditor makes the determination about how to classify those. These same material weaknesses have been in the report for, since two thousand and seven, and they've gone virtually unaddressed until, until now. We're, reported them this year as material weaknesses being corrected, uh, that's a positive spin on those, that they will be taken care of, we expect them to be taken care of in the next audit, so that they won't appear again, and that is, um, somewhat of a technical term, being, material weaknesses being corrected isn't a generally accepted way to talk about things that are, have been problematic, that are being addressed currently, so we're hoping that those, um, will go away, um, in the future, and the very near future, actually.
So, we have four material weaknesses. All four have manifested themselves, or been in place in some form since two thousand and seven.
Yes.
All four, our finance director has responded to specifically.
Yes.
And all four will be corrected by the end of this fiscal year, um, next fiscal year, so your next,
This fiscal year.
This fiscal year, I'm sorry, so your next audit should report to us that those material weaknesses, hopefully, will be eliminated.
Yeah.
And just for the public record, at least I'll give the title. Weakness number one, inadequate design of internal control over the preparation of financial statements that are audited. Weakness number two, journal entry support, for example, we need to have as backup documents invoices.
Yes.
When we make a journal entry, that has not been consistently done since two thousand and seven.
Correct.
Material weakness number three, um, is statutorily required, if I, if I, if I know that correctly, and that is recording activity directly to the fund balance, so that, that should be a fairly quick fix for us.
Yeah.
And I know Denise has been pretty much taking care of that. The next one, and the last one, the material weaknesses, reconciliation of cash and accounts receivable with the general ledger, that, that's a relatively easy fix for us as well.
Yes, it is.
That's wonderful. And then the other areas that are problematic are structural things that have been around for a while, which I know that I'll have some questions on, but the two that stick out in my mind is that there are bank accounts out there that are in the custody of boards and commissions, that should not be in the custody of boards and commissions, they should be in the custody of our treasurer, is that correct?
All funds, except for any funds that are, uh, like designated as library trust funds, for instance, should be under the control of the town treasurer.
And another area of my, of concern for me is we have spending without appropriation, because there is actually inappropriate reimbursement accounts out there. There are actually accounts that are not supported by law.
That's correct.
And so therefore, there's money that's being spent, collected and spent, that are not appropriated, so you can go through any of those in any order that you want, but I just wanted to make that clear for the record.
Okay.
Because not everyone's gonna, in Groveland's, gonna read this document.
Let, let me talk about the material weaknesses first.
Please.
And, and what I'm gonna say is that all of these are predicated on the fact that really nobody in management, in, in financial management prior to Denise coming on board, would take responsibility for the financial statements. And that is sort of a concept that each community and company, anybody that's being audited by an independent auditor, should appoint somebody in the organization who's, um, financially astute to accept responsibility for the financial statements once the audit is done, and, and the way it's supposed to work, it doesn't happen this way very often, but, um, typically, auditors come in and they get handed a set of financial statements and say, "Hey, audit these, tell me if they're okay." That doesn't happen in, in most governments, we help put the financial statements together, and we spell that out in our engagement letter, we tell you that we're gonna assist you doing this, because we know that you don't have the time or the personnel to develop this document every year in a timely fashion, so we agree, and all other accountants in Massachusetts do the same, we assist you with those financial statements, but at the end of the day, we want to turn them back over to you and say, "These are your financial statements, are you willing to accept all the, all of the amounts and disclosures in these financial statements?" And prior to Denise coming on board, we didn't have a person that would, would take responsibility for that in the town. So, all four of those material weaknesses basically relate to that, um, and with Denise coming on board, that issue, in my opinion, is gonna be resolved right away, and, and that's really all we're looking for there. The, um, the other, um, amounts, the bank account activities, it's mainly, uh, the recreation department, um, and those kind of things, these situations will, will gravitate that way, if you allow them to go that way, people have access to monies, they will spend it, and we see this happening a lot, the monies that are involved, um, more so in the inappropriate reimbursement accounts, we're talking under a couple of thousand dollars that is going through there, but, um, one of the areas is like, um, insurance recoveries. Everybody really wants to go spend that insurance money right away if it comes in, but it has to go through the appropriation process. It's not the most convenient thing to have to deal with, but that's the law, you know, and, um, but that doesn't always happen that way. So the, the inappropriate reimbursements accounts were in the police department, the sewer, the insurance reimbursements, the treasurer's office, zoning, highway, and water, so they're, they're, they're being used in a lot of different places, and Denise has put a stop to that, so we don't expect to see that comment next year either.
Would you list those again, please?
Yep, they, police, sewer, insurance reimbursements, treasury, zoning, highway, and water.
Point of information, Julie, is this the management letter that you're reading from?
Yes.
Are, are we gonna be allowed copies of this?
If I can send it out.
I think you kind of alluded on it a minute ago, that this was business that was done in the town of Groveland in the past, and we're in the process of changing over with Denise, so, like, as you said, in time, I think this will be turned over the right, the right, you know, way of doing business.
What I saw, now, we did, uh, the audit in, um, November, and we finished it up in January, I already started to see pro- a, a lot of progress being made in those areas.
As you were going along?
Yeah.
Unfortunately, it's just gonna take time, because if you take the recreation, you gotta sit down with them, and you gotta talk to them, and, and it's not an easy thing to do, because they're used to doing business their way, and they're gonna, they're gonna come back, and they're gonna buck back at us, and what have you, but, you know, having you here tonight is gonna be one thing that's gonna help us, because we're gonna be able to dig our teeth into it and say, "Hey, this is what, the auditor came in, and this is what we got."
Excuse me, excuse me, Kathy, you had a question?
Yeah, isn't, this is Powers and Sullivan, correct?
Yeah, absolutely.
So we've been using you for five, ten years?
Yes.
Ten, ten or more years, yes.
Okay, I know I'm walking in late, but it just doesn't ring well to hear you say, "This is all gonna change now, if we've been using you for ten years."
Well, then, we're, we're trying to make corrections.
Oh, no, I understand.
Kathy, I, I think you just missed the beginning, these issues have appeared since two thousand and seven in the audit report. They've been, these issues have been in the audit report since two thousand and seven, many of them.
Oh, why weren't they brought forward to our board of selectmen?
That was before me, I don't know.
Well, okay, that, all right, just keep going, that's fine.
So that's, that's why, yes.
I can go from here, thank you.
Okay, the other matters that are, uh, mentioned are, uh, the lack of, uh, board of selectmen minutes, that those weren't available to us during the audit for a period of time. We did some testing on personnel earnings records, and we found that the files, uh, were not always updated for current pay rates. A lot of times, you see a, a community that will approve, uh, across-the-board pay, pay increases to union groups and things like that, and they don't always go into the individual payroll files and update those records, we're recommending that that process be done. The police date details and the agency funds are not being reconciled on a timely basis back to the town records, so we're recommending that that process be done, and, and the response to the comment was that some software is being acquired from your current software vendor that will facilitate that process. Tax title and foreclosure balances haven't changed in many years, and, um, that is being worked on currently. And then in the back, there are several comments on other matters, um, this is a, we have a fraud risk assessment, this is a comment that we give to all of our clients, that basically says to just take a look around each department and ask the department managers to identify any areas where they think fraud could occur in their department, and our experience with this has been very positive, in, in, in communities that have, have, um, have, uh, taken a look at this and decided to do it, their eyes were opened in a lot of places.
You said fraud risk, right?
Yeah, and, and I'm not indicating that there is any known fraud or sus- suspected fraud, it's just a, um, um, sort of a buzzword that, that has come to the forefront of a lot of meetings, and we're recommending that department heads take a look around and identify idle cash, or any instances where, uh, there might be no-show employees, or access to the DPW, uh, gas, gas pumps that, or police gas pumps that don't, uh, have cameras, or locks on them, or ID numbers that are required to get fuel and things like that. Every, every time I have this comment, um, or this conversation, I get somebody that will raise their hand and say, "We have that problem in our community," and we're just suggesting that you go out to the department heads and ask them to make lists of any of those areas that are problematic. And, um, internal procedure manuals, um, that's a, another typical comment that we make to most all of our clients, to document what people do on a daily basis, so that when you have employee turnover, uh, their job can be, um, taken over by a new employee with, uh, with the least amount of pain. And then finally, on page thirteen, there are some new GASBs coming out, new GASB is the Government Accounting Standards Board, who, uh, writes all the literature and is the, uh, is GAAP, basically, for governments. They're coming out with, um, new standards on pension reporting and, and OPEB reporting, the OPEB reporting is not out yet, it's coming out in, in June of this year, and I think it's gonna be effective in two thousand and seventeen. The pension GASB requirement is effective, um, this coming fiscal year, two thousand and fifteen. And what that's gonna mean is that the town is gonna pick up a liability on its financial statements that currently is disclosed only in the notes to the financials, y- you're part of the Essex Retirement Board, they're gonna give you a schedule that says, "This is your proportionate share of Essex liability, and that liability will get recorded on your financial statements going forward." That is not anything new, we, everybody knows what that number is, it's just buried in the back of the financial statements in the notes, it'll move up forward and be recorded on the financials going forward, and the same thing with the OPEB. What that will do, it will create, uh, it may create a negative, uh, amount in your fund balances, and you'll have to be, uh, aware of what that is, so that you can explain that to rating agencies and citizens, to be able to explain to them why you have a negative there, because that's where most of the questions will come from. This report looks a lot worse than it is, um, there are a lot of mitigating factors that are always been in place here, but, um, we have to write up what we find, and, um, I, I don't wanna really talk real negatively about employees, currently are, or in the past, um, I, there were other workarounds that, that prevented monies from being lost and so forth, but the, uh, the recommendations are what they are, and, um, these are sort of what we would base on, base practice, best practices and so forth, and, I will say that, that we have issued a formal management letter every year that I've been associated with back to two thousand and five, so these matters have been here, it's nothing new, um, so.
Thank you. Questions from the finance committee, Kathy?
You want to identify yourself?
Go to that first.
Okay.
I think, uh, Bill Cook, Chair of the Finance Committee, Tennessee way in Groveland, I only have one question, uh, that, like you said, those are best practices, but there wasn't any funds that were missing by the end of this, right, it was just that, they're too loose, the way it was set up, and it, it, it could be mishandled and misappropriated if it was left that way, and the, the best practices that make it so it's a tighter policy is to handle the, the funds that way.
That's correct.
Okay.
The only issue that we found that affected the, the town was one year when the, um, the town bought a fire truck years ago, and the appropriation for that fire truck didn't get recorded, the, the, the encumbrance for it. So when you went to use, look at your free cash the subsequent year, it wasn't there, because it didn't get picked up properly in the encumbrance process. That's the only time we really found anything that negatively affected, um, the town as a result of that. Drives us a little crazy when we come in and try and do the audit, and we, we have to book, um, adjustments relating to commitments not being posted, or, um, we find that cash and receivables haven't been reconciled, and it, it makes our work a little harder, but that other instance is the only time that I would say that there's been any real negative impact to the town at all.
It's just a better structure, there's no, to handle things the way, that, that's what we pay you guys for, to come up with a better structure for us, to, so that we don't have anything that's too loose that somewhere could actually misappropriate funds.
That's the, that's the, that's the idea, yes.
Right.
It can always happen, but, uh,
Right.
that would be a fraud, we don't audit for fraud, um, uh, we do a lot of tests that, that hopefully will expose it, but that's not part of our objective, is finding fraud, um, but we haven't found any.
Okay.
Okay, as I described that situation with the fire truck, um, the funds were available and other reserve accounts that were made available, mostly from overlay, but, um, that situation resolved itself pretty quickly.
All right, thank you.
So some of the board and commissions that, um, have accounts, checking accounts, reimbursement accounts, also have their own tax ID numbers, that's problematic.
It is, yes.
Did you, did you discover any specific ID numbers, or did you just encounter checking accounts and reimbursement accounts, inappropriate accounts that basically?
I think the majority of them are using the town's ID number, right?
The problem is more when they're using the town's tax ID, because everything under the town's tax ID falls under the care and custody of the treasurer. So when they're using our tax ID and not in our custody is where we have problems.
So again, the prob- basic problem is spending without appropriation is the biggest problem.
That's right, yep.
Can I just say that, wasn't the fire?
You can identify who you are, please.
Kathy Kestrel, the fire truck, we were certified by the Department of Revenue as negative free cash, which would suggest that we used the money elsewhere and, and went narrowly along, and then the next year, as I recall, we had to go to town meeting and transfer from overlay, so it wasn't like the money was put aside. I'm just wondering, like, the check and balance system didn't seem to work that year, you know, how, how could that?
I agree.
Right, and I'm very concerned about that, and what you mentioned at the end with this, um, funds that might go negative because of some initials, because I don't know what that is, um, how are we supposed to understand what that is in layman's terms? What are you telling us?
What I was talking about was that the OPEB liability and the pension liability, when it gets,
What's up, what's up, OPEB?
Other post-employment benefits.
Say that again?
Other post-employment benefits.
And what is that?
That's life insurance and health insurance for retired employees. That's life insurance and health insurance for retired employees.
Okay, thank you.
So there is a long-term liability associated with the pension and the OPEB liabilities that, under new accounting standards, starting in 2015, are gonna be required to be reported on the financial statements. And those are gonna, those liabilities, as they come on the books, are gonna cause your unreserved fund balance in your governmental activities to go negative. It, it may cause it to go negative, but I'm not sure yet, because I haven't seen what the numbers are.
What are these liabilities?
Pensions and other post-employment benefits.
So it's, is it money we're paying or not paying?
It's money that you're accruing for future benefits.
Okay, and so why is it becoming, could it become a deficit?
Up until 2015, those amounts were not required to be reported on the financial statement, on the, on the face of the financial statements. They were only required to be reported in the notes to the financial statements. So going forward, they'll be required to be reported on the, on the financial statements themselves, and they may cause the fund balances at the end to become negative.
And what does that mean?
It means that your rating agencies might say, "How come you have a negative fund balance there?" Actually, it's a negative net position, what they call it, and you need to be prepared to explain what that is to those rating agencies.
That impact borrowing for us?
It could, yes.
My question was gonna be, is, um, you guys obviously keep an eye on our bond rating, so how is the bond rating looking as far as we are now? Are we, are we in a good bond rating, or?
You have a
Bondable rating?
You have a, an average bond rating?
Average?
Yeah.
Has it always been average?
If we keep going out and bonding projects and taking on more projects, i- is that gonna hurt us, or?
Not necessarily.
Necessarily.
Yep. I mean, that's, that's how governments finance
Yep.
construction. So it's, it, it takes that and spreads it over
But we can pay back.
a period of time.
Ability to pay it back.
Yep, gives you the ability to raise money to pay those payments over a period of time, as opposed to saving for them and, and waiting to have them done later. So, we have some communities that have what we consider too little debt, and we have some communities that have too much debt. Groveland has always been on the too little debt. You borrow a little bit more money recently, but for a long time, you didn't have hardly any debt. So, I mean, and a lot of that is because of the, the regional school system that you have, but you've still been, been conservative on the borrowing side.
That doesn't help a bond rating, not that I'm
No, it does.
I don't want to borrow money, but the reality is, it's almost inverse for most people to understand that. I was fascinated by your discovery of the treasury records that showed that we, we haven't had a, and I'm gonna have Denise weigh in on this, because she's done some amazing work in this area, that we don't have a detailed balance, or a current detailed balance on, on tax titles. We have, as you indicated here, detailed balance is more than five years old, and some properties have been in tax title as long as thirty-one years. So for the general public, if we can foreclose on some of these properties that have always taxes, that's easy money, if you will.
Yes.
And, and you had made specific recommendations. Your thoughts on that, or?
It's, it's a, it's a process that virtually, you know, most town treasurers go through on an annual basis, and it just hasn't been, been done here. I mean, it, it was done years ago and then sporadically over the years, but it just has not been addressed every year.
So that's an ongoing project. Can you give us an update? I know you started working on this in March of 2014.
Yes. So, yes, so I've been marking on this since pretty much my first day here. Part of the problem is the records here are inconsistent. Some properties have been identified that were in tax title, that were in foreclosure, were not legally foreclosed on, or the tax title was not actually followed through. So my staff started going through the Essex Registry of Deeds on all of the parcels that had outstanding taxes to figure out what was actually recorded at the registry, if there were foreclosures done, if the property has changed hands, so that we could try and build a database of what we actually have in outstanding taxes. We have had an issue arise since I've been here, that the town auctioned off a property that we foreclosed on. Come to find out, this apparently, the, the auction took place several years ago. A foreclosure was never done. We had no legal standing to auction off someone's property. And there are several of these issues that we don't know what was really done on these parcels. So we have been going through, we're getting ready to send out notifications to everybody that has outstanding taxes, that we are getting ready to do the next step, which is to actually do the official tax title recording and advertising in the newspaper. Once we get caught up with all of the prior years, it will be an annual process. Normally, my process is taxes are due May first. By June, they have demand bills. By September, they're in the newspaper, and by October, they're in tax title. It should be a very straightforward process every year. Everybody should be following that process. Everybody should go into tax title. We're not in the business of picking and choosing which bills we wanna put in title and which ones we don't. It should apply to everybody across the board. So that's the process we've been going through.
Thank you. We have been fortunate. Even though we have had inappropriate reimbursement accounts and tax IDs and bank accounts by many, many departments, we've been fortunate. Because you're right, a lot of these things could create fraud and misappropriation of funds. One area that has been controversial for us over the years, however, has been the Police Department. And so, you did cite that there are some issues with the, with the police detail reporting. Can you just share with us what the concerns were in the report?
Well, there's a, there's a balance that's maintained over at the Police Department of what the outstanding details are owed to town are. And there's a balance that the town records, and those two amounts should be reconciled on, on a monthly basis.
Monthly.
And they haven't been. There's about seventy-five thousand dollars outstanding, and, and the activity that runs through that account is about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. There's, it's, it's, you know, it's, it's not too often that we see this situation, because a, a lot of times, the police departments, and I'm not picking on the police at all.
Sure.
They like to hold this thing and not turn it over to the town. The new software will allow that to happen, so that the reconciliation process will, will be complete each month. But a lot of times, the details, the thing is, the officers are paid at, by law, as they provide the details. And a lot of times, the, the users just don't get around to paying the details back on a timely basis. And it's not a, an uncommon thing.
So you mean the vendors?
Yeah, the vendors, yeah.
Right.
So it's not a, it's not a unusual problem, and it's, it's not a, a big problem. There, the numbers are not way off. It's just the process is not in place to do this on a monthly basis. I'm, I'm not suggesting that
So new software will allow them to do this?
Right. So currently, what the problem is, is they're keeping track of payments that come in from details on an Excel spreadsheet, but they have no way of keeping track of what was actually billed versus what's come in. So that's the difference, is we know what we're paying out of details to pay the officers, but we don't really know what we're waiting on. So I call and say, "You have a deficit in the account. What are we waiting on?" And they can't give me an idea. So they did call their software vendor, who does have a detailed package. They were waiting on specifications to make sure it could be used here with what they, with what they're currently running. And if so, we plan to implement that. So that would keep them, that would keep an accounting of what they're billing and what they're taking in and what's outstanding at any point in time.
So it's, it's similar to one of the material weaknesses, the journal entry, where you need supporting documentation, like an invoice. We know what's going on, but we don't have something to match against what we billed.
Correct. We know what we're taking in. We don't know what the outstanding liability is that we billed and haven't collected.
Right, got it. Okay, good. So that's being taken care of as well?
Yes.
Any other questions?
Yes.
Hi, John Mifftonia, sixteen, Stonebridge Road, Groveland. Sorry, I missed, I came in halfway through the, the presentation. Is the scope of audit you're doing here in Groveland similar to other towns of this size?
Yes, exactly the same.
Didn't the amount go down this year for the annual audit versus last year's?
No.
No.
It's been the same.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike, thank you very much.
Thank you, too. This is the first time I've been invited to, to address the board
I know, first time we've met you.
It's, it's a pleasure, Rick, with the, with the town.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Have a good night, everyone.
Yeah.
Lenny's here, huh?
Yeah, waiting for Senator Bruce Tar to show up, if that's okay.
Oh, sure, it would be okay. Where, where do you think he is? Do you have an idea?
Denver, he's from Hamilton.
Okay.
Yeah, so I think we both want at the same time.
Is he taking a car?
I hope so.
Do we win something?
Do the warrants?
Why don't you wanna do, well, we're waiting for Senator Ta, why don't we do a few bookkeeping issues?
And you have an appointment.
And then we also have an appointment, too. So, all right, let me do the warrants real quick. The payroll warrant, number fifteen dash forty-one, for a total of a hundred and thirty-one thousand, six hundred and sixty-five and eighteen. Do I have a second?
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
I abstain. Two ayes, one abstention. Detail warrant and bill warrant. Who would like to do those, please?
Okay, deduct warrant, number fifteen dash thirty-nine A, for a total of twenty-five thousand and nine and thirty-nine cents. Do I have a second?
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and bill warrant, number fifteen dash forty-one, for a total of nine hundred and seventy-five thousand, four hundred and fifty and seventy-six cents. Do I have a second?
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you. And we have an appointment of Stephanie Smith of Beverly, to the position of Library Assistant for a fifteen-hour-per-week position at a starting rate of ten dollars, effective April seventh, which will be tomorrow, 2015. Appointment is made pending a successful Corey certification. Do I have a motion to appoint Stephanie Smith of Beverly?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, and we met Mike, and that was very good information, and he did a nice presentation for
Great.
us to, uh, follow, I believe.
Well, the good news is, you know, the fixing of everything under the bill.
Go to the roof?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's a quick-ish.
Yeah.
Do I have something in this packet on that, too?
Yes.
I thought I saw some names.
It's only a few in, because we don't have much other course comments.
All right, so what we're talking about now is the Bagnall School roof, snow shoveling. We initially had been presented a bill. I'll, I'll back up one step, so that public understands what's going on. The Bagnall School roof needed to be shoveled off in an emergency situation. The schools were closed for a two-week period, and what had happened is, in that period, they were closed, the town of Groveland entered, was gonna enter into a contract to shovel the roofs off. It came before our board, and our board sat down and discussed that we would go back to the district and find someone that would be either working over there already, or would get recommendations. So it came back, I guess we got recommendations. The job was completed. The job come in at, I believe it was fifty-nine thousand and change. We had a look at the bill, didn't feel the bill was right. The board asked Betty and I to come and do our due diligence to try and do the investigation on the bill. I went and had conversation with the middle school maintenance, head of maintenance. They paid forty dollars an hour. I had spoken to the representative in Merrimack. They paid forty dollars. And on one of their other schools, they paid approximately fifty dollars. For whatever reason, they didn't get into it. We were billed at a rate of sixty dollars an hour. We were billed for fuel, meals, transportation. We were billed for office, office labor, for two girls, and other expenses, over and above what our finance director had talked to them about. We, as a board, went back and said, "We don't feel this bill was right. We're gonna go back and try and discuss it." And in the interim, we asked for payroll records of the company. In return, we did not get payroll records. We actually just got a, a sheet listing, listening, listing the hourly rate they paid the men. It's not payroll records. So in, in my investigation, I went and looked at roughly the size of the middle school and the Bagnall School are roughly about the same size. Actually, the Bagnall School has more pointed roof space than the middle school. In my recommendation to my other co-partners, I recommend that we pay, what they had paid in the district was forty dollars an hour. I believe that if I did my math right, the Bagnall School was nine hundred and seventy-two hours to shovel. The middle schools are roughly in the vicinity of six hundred and eleven dollars to shovel. I believe tonight, we should approve the bill for thirty-eight thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars. And if you, for sake of argument, wanted to go a little higher, I wouldn't go over forty-five dollars an hour, because we're paying five dollars more an hour than the other schools. That would be forty-three thousand, seven forty. And that's, we should not be penalized for, I guess what happened is, they said the men were tired and they had to charge us at a different rate. I don't believe we should be penalized if their men got tired. That's a in, internal company problem, and I don't think it should have been passed on to us. Our regional school system, I believe, this is what we should pay.
Well, Betty
We did, go ahead, Jim.
No, I'm sorry. Betty, Betty had, just so the public is aware, Betty did provide the instructions to Bill to go ahead and represent the board. And the work that you did, Bill, which is excellent work, we appreciate it. And I, I tend to favor the, the number of thirty-eight and change, based on your research. And I, I, I also like the fact that we wanna pay a bill, and we're not gonna hold up the bill, but we're gonna pay what we feel is fair. So, yeah, I, I'm in favor if it requires a vote or, or consensus. I'm in favor of paying the, the bill, as you researched it at thirty-eight and change. And if we get a response back, or rebuttal, or a challenge that additional monies would be required, then let that position be defended by the vendor.
Then I'll make a motion that we accept my work
Findings.
and findings.
Can you just repeat the amount that you
The amount that I want, that we discussed, thirty-eight thousand, eight hundred and eighty.
Betty, did you have an opinion also?
That, you know, we had unprecedented weather this, this year. And, you know, I was called to a meeting along with the chairs from the other two towns, along with staff from Penn Tucket Regional. And it was the week before their winter vacation, it was Monday night, and the snow was, you know, piling up, and it was a concern. I think we were probably the first people in the area that decided to get the snow off the roofs, hire people. And not wanting to take a risk with any kids in school, we made the determination to give them those four extra days of vacation. So I'm sure they love us for that. Maybe not the moms and dads, but we just did what we felt was right. And we all were in this as a regional school district. Merrimack got a price, high school got a price, middle school got a price. We got
Top end.
We got, yeah. And, and don't tell us, because the people were tired, that they had to charge us more. And they were charging us for fuel and for meals, and I, I just kind of never heard of that. So when that first bill came in, we all, you know, instead of shoveling the roof, raised the roof, correct?
We were gonna go upstairs, up on the roof ourselves.
And the bill was, this is Bill's, you know, forte. This is his business. So he did do the research, and he's a very well-respected business person. So I believe that the work Bill did, we should support, and we'll send what we think is fair. We're not trying to shirk our responsibility. So we have a motion to send it?
Who made the motion?
I did.
Okay, I'm, so moved.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you. So we're still waiting for Senator Tar, is that right?
We can maybe go through the
Anything else you've got here that we can take care of before?
Field use permits, maybe?
You could start on the field use permit, too.
Sure, okay. Field use permits for Groveland Youth Soccer, or Shanahan Field, Pines Mini Soccer Fields, Pines Babe Ruth Outfield, New Pines Field. The New Pines Field, I don't believe will be playable this year.
It will not.
So that's one that we won't be able to use or even think about this year. And do you wanna do Groveland Youth Soccer before we move on to Groveland Rec?
Sure. Sure.
support those?
I'll make a motion that we approve the field use permits for Groveland Youth Soccer in three areas. Shanahan Field, Pines for purpose of mini soccer field use, and then for the use of the Pines Babe Ruth outfield.
Seconded.
We will not be able to use the New Pines Field.
We have to strike New Pines Field.
So Joe made a motion, and Bill you have a second? Any further discussion? Who's that?
The only discussion?
Do you have any discussion?
No, no, it's all right.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry.
I just wanted, you had a question on one of them. I didn't know if you wanted to discuss it as part of your
I don't think she heard me.
I know. Well, you started to say it, but you did have a question on one of the
Well, my only question would be, and I know we need to get this done, are we premature to be accepting this before we had the committees come before us? I know we, we can approve them, but, um,
Aren't these requests from the committees?
But do we need to talk to them at all, or do we?
No, so the requests that are here, all of the dates, I've gone through, all of the dates are acceptable. There was a question you had on one of them, Betty, whether or not it should be a special event. That is in here. So it, I just, that was the only one that was kind of questionable.
And we kind of agreed prior to that it should be a special event, right?
But that's in here to be voted, so you were just voting on it.
The July fifth?
Yes.
Okay. So, do we pull a July fifth event out and vote on it separately as a special event?
If that's the way you feel, yes.
Does my board feel that way?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
So all the other ones for Groveland Youth Soccer, all of those dates and times are fine. For Shanahan Field, the soccer camp is fine. And the request at the Pines, as you alluded to, the New Pines Field will not be available. But the mini soccer fields behind the Babe Ruth outfield is fine. It does not conflict with any Babe Ruth camps. So those are all acceptable
Okay.
with the one if you wanted to discuss it.
So all in favor on these, and correct? Aye.
Yep.
Aye.
And the July fifth date, we will call it a special event, so there's certain criteria they have to meet, correct?
Yes.
Do I have a motion that we vote on the July fifth event, special event?
I'd like to make a motion that July fifth that actually comes through our field use policy.
You have a special event policy?
Special event policy, that's what I meant.
So if, if you do determine that it's a special event, then it would have to follow that.
Those guidelines, right?
Correct.
Yeah, we need to, we need to implement that.
And the July fifth one is, what is it? I'm having a hard time finding it here. I don't, maybe
July fifth is the night we, when everybody's at Shanahan Field, and they watch fireworks and have fun.
Okay.
The request, you should have a copy of it in there. It's one of the first, I think it's like the third one in there is
Oh, that's right, I'm looking at the back.
Yes, is July fifth. I'm sorry, it's July third with the rain date of July fifth.
So I'll amend the motion.
Okay.
Motion, so it's July third with a rain date of July fifth.
Oh, it's a rain date.
Yeah. Makes sense, the night before is when they're gonna do the
Yeah, I always wonder, I thought, well, maybe they know something I don't know.
But, but I guess we're all in agreement. We want to make sure that it comes through the
It's a special, a special event.
Special event policy.
And follows, follows those rules and regulations.
So the permit will be granted, subject to special event policy is complied with.
And you'll be in touch with Steve Merrill?
Yes, I'll let him know, once you vote, you can sign all the permits afterwards, and I'll be in touch with all of these groups.
I'll make the motion to ask, I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now we have the Groveland Recreation slash Youth Softball and Pennsylkill JV and Freshmen Program. Pines softball field and batting cages?
Yes, so the only thing I'm waiting on here is, but I, I don't see a problem with you approving it pending. I'm just waiting on a copy of the insurance certificate from the school.
Okay.
So because this does cover Pennsylkill as well, Pennsylkill should be providing us with a copy of their insurance liability.
So I'd like to make a motion that we approve the Pines softball and field batting cages for youth softball and also Pennsylkill JV and freshman contingent upon
The certificate from the school?
The certificate, insurance certificate being received on a timely basis.
Do you have a second, Bill?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you, unanimous. Then we have Groveland Baseball, Washington Park. No issues with Groveland Baseball are all set?
They are all set. I do not have a complete schedule, but I've been informed that no one else really requests use of that field.
Right.
If anyone did, I would just check with the baseball league to see if it conflicts with their games. I don't see any problems with that. And they have attached, the insurance certificate is attached to their request.
Right.
Groveland Baseball did ask me last week when they were meeting here if we had received their invitation to opening day.
It's in your packet.
It's in here? Good, thank you.
Okay, good point.
Very good. Okay, Joe, you want to make that motion for the baseball of Washington Park?
That we grant the Groveland Baseball of Washington Park as applied for.
Seconded.
It's already attached, so.
Second, Bill?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous, thank you. And we also have Pennsylkill Babe Ruth coming up. Joe, would you like to make that motion?
Sure. Pennsylkill Babe Ruth to be granted the use of the Pines for the Babe Ruth Field for their season as applied for.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those are all taken care of. Hopefully, they all work out.
Well, we might as well keep going.
Did I see Senator Ta come into the room?
No.
Oh, it was
He just phoned me.
He was in the
Hamilton, he is in route.
He's in route, okay.
Yes.
All right. Sorry, Lenny, we got you here a little early.
That's okay. We're accustomed to waiting for Senator Ta. How many currents?
Now we can do the votes of the board.
Yeah, you do have the votes on the back of your agenda. You should have a second, a separate section in your agenda packet for that.
So we have a snow and ice deficit spending request from Road Commissioner dated March twenty-fourth this year for thirty-five thousand dollars. Do I have a motion that we allow this deficit spending?
Go ahead, Bill, you do some motions on the votes tonight.
I'll make a motion, and before I make my motion, I think I've already asked Denise, this, this looks like this is gonna be the end of the deficit spending on the snow right now?
Yes, it is. To be honest, the highway, the Road Commissioner put some, some bills through, and then we realized he was in a deficit. He wasn't aware of it. He, we miscalculated, or he miscalculated the roof cost. So we thought we were all set. We realized we, he had spent about twenty-something thousand more, so he needed this thirty-five. So we shouldn't, he should be all done pending any other issues that happen to arrive. But all the spending is done, all of his supply costs are done, so there should be no more, again, barring any sort of snow issue that arrives.
So I'll make a motion that we accept the Road Commissioner's override of thirty-five thousand for FY fifteen snow and ice budget based on that this will be the end of it for the season. We know the snow already stopped.
We're gonna count.
Denise, no snow?
No snow.
So, I'll second that, but open to discussion. That's three two-hundred-and-ten's, which is six-thirty, plus thirty-five is a total of six-hundred-and-sixty-five was the snow and ice deficit spending that was requested this year, total.
I'm sorry, two-hundred-and-forty-five thousand.
Two-forty-five.
Didn't we have two-ten, 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 three-ten?
No, we did seventy thousand, three-ten, a total of two-ten.
Two, I'm sorry.
And then the thirty-five to close. So it's two-hundred-and-forty-five thousand in deficit spending request for snow and ice.
You don't, you don't have a number. I know that you can't go on a common year because most years we don't have this. And you weren't here in the year past to tell us what they spent in a winter like this in the past.
In a winter like this, I, I don't know that anyone can tell you that because it's really an unprecedented winter.
How about towns around us? Do you have any kind of an idea?
I mean, I can tell you, everybody's in this situation.
Yeah.
Everybody is spending, you know, two, three, four times their snow and ice budget just because of the situation we were in. And most of the contracts, you know, we're lucky that we have a smaller, I mean, I guess we're not lucky, but our highway department is a smaller workforce. But other, or communities that have larger unionized shops that pay, you know, double time after so many hours, and, you know, we only have three guys that are subject to those requirements, so we made off a little bit better than other communities that have larger union forces.
So we had budgeted one-sixty-five?
Yes, correct.
And then we went plus two-forty-five.
But it, we're not gonna probably spend the two-forty-five, we're probably at two-hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand additional. But we just figured we'd make it a round number, just in case some random bill happened to come through.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
So all in favor on this spending?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Number two, we have the Finance Director's Employment Agreement Amendment. Do I have a motion on that?
Bill, I'll make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the Finance Director's Employment Agreement Amendment.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any comments or conversation or anything to be discussed? Nope, that's it? That's unanimous. Request of the Library Director to increase Library Assistant Amanda Levy's hours to eighteen hours per week. What was she working, Denise?
So she was at fourteen hours, and I believe I mentioned to this board last week at one of our meetings that now that we have a new library director, she is evaluating the best use of time and budget as far as staffing. Over the last year, we've gone through obviously some changes. We've added some pages, we've added a library assistant. She's really trying to figure out what the best number of staff is, how best to schedule the staff, and she felt that she can still stay within the, the budget, but it was best to increase the Library Assistant Amanda Levy's hours. You will probably see some other adjustments coming down the pike as she still works through what the best schedule is for the library.
Very good. Okay, a motion to
I'll make a motion.
Increase Amanda's hours.
To amend Amanda's hours based on, the money is in the library budget.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous, Amanda's library hours. Property use permit, Board of Library Trustees wish to place a banner at the fire station and the light department in front of the library. Is that for their book sale?
Yes, it is. So they would like, in the lawn, they have, they actually have a bouncy house request as well. And then they would like to hang a banner by the electric department across Main Street in front of the fire station and on the electric department property.
Think the electric light department puts that up for them, is that right?
Yes, they do.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the property use permit for the, the Board of Library Trustees for their lawn in front of the library and a banner in front of the station and the light department.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. And we have minutes from February twenty-third. Has everybody had a chance to look at those?
I did read my minutes.
I read, I read them all.
And Betty, if I can clarify, you were not at that meeting, so you would not be voting on those.
Thank you for letting me know.
You're welcome.
Do I have a motion, Joe?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from February twenty-third meeting.
And Bill?
I accept, I mean, yeah, sure.
Second.
Except nomination?
Yeah. I accept.
Okay.
Too much paperwork.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I didn't attend, so I won't be voting, thank you. We have executive session minutes from February twenty-third, twenty-fifteen. Has everybody looked at those executive session?
I've looked at mine.
I've studied it.
Okay, and I was not there, so.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the executive session minutes from February twenty-third, twenty-fifteen.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Minutes from the all boards meeting on February twenty-eighth, twenty-fifteen. Do I have a motion to accept those minutes?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes from the all boards meeting, this would be the second one of February twenty-eighth, twenty-fifteen.
Do I have a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you. And minutes from the March ninth meeting, twenty-fifteen.
Sure. Like to make a motion to accept the minutes from the March ninth, twenty-fifteen meeting.
Do I have a second from, second from Bill? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous, thank you both. Okay. In correspondence, um, anything there that needs to be dealt with at this time, Denise? Just bring ourselves up to date with this, please.
Nothing that really needs to be dealt with, more informational, just a point of information on the very first correspondence. That is a letter from the current cleaning company from the town, Bob Henderson. This board has supported the idea of eliminating the cleaning company and going to custodian facilities person. As a result, we would no longer need the services of Bob's Cleaning. They have been around since the early eighties. And it's bittersweet, you know, he's very close to people. He comes around several times a week. He's very comfortable here, very friendly. So he just wanted to take a moment to say thanks to the board for all of the years of service and just attach his letter that was originally sent to the town in nineteen-seventy-eight advertising his business, so. Just thought, I would actually ask that sometime between now and June thirtieth, this board does a citation or proclamation or something thanking them for all their years of service that they have done to the town.
Of thanks and for his support and commitment to our town, absolutely. And we do thank him, that's a long time.
Yes, it is.
Very good. I think the reason being, we need more than just cleaning. We need somebody to handle small repairs throughout the day, and that's why the change is being implemented.
Correct. It's nothing to the, you know, due to the company. They do a great job. Like I said, they come religiously three times a week to all facilities. It's just our needs have expanded. And we do need somebody, at least more accessible, someone that we can call if we need something, someone that can replace light fixtures and ceiling tiles and do some painting and, you know, light repair workforce. We rely heavily on the highway department, and they can't always be available to do things like that, so. It makes more sense to have somebody here dealing with the mechanics and, and facility needs as well.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you to Mr. Henderson and family. Nothing else there under correspondence, right?
No, the next item is just a letter for your information. You had received some correspondence a month or two ago from the water department regarding this property, so this is a follow-up on that issue. So it's just something that you have.
We had that previously, didn't we?
Yes, you did.
And is that being resolved?
Well, now they have given a date of April fifteenth before fines are assessed.
Oh, so they haven't done that, is it?
They have not.
Yeah, hasn't been resolved. There's been no response, unfortunately.
So he did, I'm sorry, he did pay the first five-hundred-dollar fine.
Okay.
But now they have several things that need to be updated.
Is that five-hundred, how is that implemented? Time frame?
They gave him thirty days to comply with the previous request, and he did not, but then he did remit the five-hundred-dollar fine.
Under correspondence, you've got minutes from March twenty-third. Is, is that a reason, just for us to make ourselves familiar with?
Correct, so there, there are many minutes under the correspondence.
That's right, our new person was doing
Yeah, so those are all just for you to review, so they will be on your next agenda to vote. So on April twenty-first is when you will see.
I've already read them also, yeah. Whenever everyone has read them, and we'll try to get them approved in the next couple of meetings, that'd be great.
Well, and some of them you probably didn't see because I just finished the ones from last week today, so they're in your packet now.
The ones that were in the PDF that you
Yes, but no, I've included everything from last week was not in the original PDF. I just got those.
April second, for example.
Yes, so you will see all of those minutes. Some of them are quite short because you didn't take any votes. But all of those minutes are just for you to read, and they will be on April twenty-first.
Okay, good.
April twenty-first, vote is left, I think. The next two items, the codes of conduct, those were items I presented to you several months ago on the recommendation of our insurance company. At the time, you wanted to just review them, so I took them off. We do, you do need to actually address them at some point, so I put them back on as correspondence just so you can refamiliarize yourself. And then if it's okay, we can put them on the April twenty-first.
We should elevate them to an agenda item.
Yes. I didn't want to just put them on until I refreshed your memory on them.
We've seen them a couple of times.
Yeah, well, do we meet tomorrow night?
Yes.
Okay. And then we meet to, how many times this week?
Tomorrow night is a public meeting to discuss the budget and the town meeting warrants. You need to vote on those items.
Tomorrow.
Wednesday is an executive session.
Wednesday's just executive session.
And then Wednesday six?
Correct.
And Thursday six?
We're not meeting on Thursday.
Oh, no.
No, we are not.
I was getting used to coming every night.
All right. Thank you. Have we seen Senator Ta? Nobody looks like him, or could fill in for him?
Unless you wanted to deal with, you could certainly speak to Bruce about the affordable housing. Because that's, um,
Seven forty, okay.
And we can come back to the rest of And we can come back to the rest of it.
Is it just you Bruce? That's your team?
Just me, Bob's out of town, Bob Guptel, so we're the committee. So Bruce Adams, Affordable Housing. What would you like to hear or know, anything in particular or?
We'd like to hear that once it's built, it will be self-sustaining and we won't be coming to the town for any additional monies.
Well, let me kind of back up. We went to CPA and asked for funding to bring the project to, through design, complete design, on the assumption that the town would be essentially putting the project out for bid to hire a contractor and the town would own the building and would manage it ourselves. Since that time, we met with our consultant.
And the consultant's name is?
Abacus.
Abacus, yes.
And we reviewed different options for the town and they suggested that we may not want to own and operate a facility like that. So they, we talked about different options whereby the town would lease the land for, you know, they threw out like a ninety-nine-year lease for a dollar. And that the town would then bring the project to the point where we would then put it out for proposals for developers to build, own and build a building to our specifications. And at this point, that seems like a better option for us. It would be less costly to the town, less risk, less management issues. So that's kind of being vetted, so we're kind of changing gears, so I thought it might be best to withdraw the CPA application at this point. I think there's a lot of questions and concerns about what's being put forward and there really isn't a lot of information and things are kind of changing. So that would give us more time to really fully vet out the options and make sure that everybody kind of is, or at least understands what's being proposed.
The right project for the town.
Right.
The right project for the piece of land.
So, and since things are changing and we're getting different information, we had hoped all this would come up.
Before.
Beforehand, but, you know, better late than never, but I think it would probably be best to pull it.
We know it's needed, but-
Yeah, we do, you know, affordable housing is needed. There's some questions about whether that site is appropriate for the kind of housing that's being proposed now, as you know, we originally proposed something for over fifty-five which would kind of work well with the River Pines housing complex, you know, similar age groups and all. We had hoped to try to work in some senior, a senior center into the picture, which doesn't look promising without money input from the town. And what we found was the only viable option that would not cost the town any money, only some CPA seed money for the design. Or inclusionary zoning money, because there is a little about two hundred thousand dollars in that fund too.
There is.
Or actually more than that, I believe.
More than that?
Yes, and we just received another eighty thousand plus.
So, so there is other money there available. So there's a lot of money available for affordable housing, but what was being proposed that would cost the town really very little money and certainly nothing out of taxes or the budget would be a mix of affordable housing that reached from the very low income up to moderate income, kind of on the low end thing.
Mixed.
We're not sure that that's the best mix for that site and I'm sure, from what I hear, there's been a lot of opposition to that, so. Again, until we can fully discuss the project in open forums and things, we thought it would be best to go back.
Did you say having a ninety-nine-year lease and having a private party come in and build it, did you mention that?
Yeah, yeah, and that's kind of where we're leaning toward.
Okay.
But again, that really hasn't been fully discussed. So we thought it'd be best to take the next, really probably the next year to bring that to conclusion. Our consultant still has more work to do to look at that site, what would fit on it and really fine tune that. So we thought we'd get that finished, get a little more information on the best way to own and/or operate the facility, look at the costs like you're looking for, you know, and the commitments that the town would have to make for future management and how that might work, whether it's privately managed with a town overseer or whether the town had some say in that or any combination thereof, there's a lot of different options.
See, what we get from River Pines is called a pilot payment?
Payment in lieu of taxes.
Payment in lieu of taxes, right, because we do go in there and plow the snow. They have their own trash picked up, I believe.
Yeah, and those are things that we haven't really fully discussed is how that would all work. So I think more time would be.
Is there enough money set aside to carry on to get to your next point? Do you have enough money?
Yeah, there's, from the CPA approval a year ago, I believe it was, if I remember correctly, ninety thousand dollars? It was approved?
I thought it was seventy.
Seventy thousand, okay, I think you're right. We've gone through about, I'd say, two-thirds of that. So there's still scope left to, for our consultant Abacus to complete and so we'll do that and.
And that work can position us to go either the way we were considering to go this year with the CPA expenditure of three fifty for a complete set of plans or also another way.
Another way.
Where basically we want to market the property.
Exactly, we would bring it through all the permitting, so we would have a site with a concept in terms of parking, the building layout, the number of units, rough idea of size.
Like this is what the town would like to see?
Exactly.
And if we get somebody willing to do this.
To build it, yeah.
And we transfer the financing and the risk to a private party.
Correct.
So the work that's been done and the money that's been expended has not been wasted.
Oh, absolutely not, no, that would definitely be necessary.
It's very important for people to understand that, yeah.
Right, but what we had, you know, with CPA, the numbers we have and we're still waiting for the final numbers look like they'd be less, much less than that.
Than the three fifty?
Than the three fifty.
But you're recommending withdrawing the warrant?
That's correct.
For future reconsideration, correct? Maybe a year from now or two years from now.
Yeah, I think a year from now.
Affordable Housing Committee will meet again, I'm sure, and start looking at some alternatives.
I believe so, although it may just be Bob at that point. We're down to two and then I, not being a resident of the town anymore.
Down to two is scary business.
So Bob will be the only one left, so it'd be nice if other-
Other people would join this committee, right?
Use another three or four even.
Well, thank you for your service, I know that-
Welcome, it's been a pleasure.
Moving on and out.
Yep, I'll still be in the area around.
That's good.
Well, thank you for coming forward to show good faith.
Right, that's all right.
You're welcome.
Just not ready to go at this particular time, right?
Due diligence by the taxpayers to not put something forward without having an ending number or whatever is the right thing to do.
There's enough up in the air and question.
There's enough up in the air, we have-
You don't want to set yourself up for failure.
Exactly.
Thank you Bruce, thank you very much. Okay, I think he is, he's in the hall, somebody.
Yeah.
Hey, thank you Steve. Thanks Steve.
I'll start people with handout anyways while we're here. Senator Tar has a much bigger handout, but I sent out a small two-page just with a graph on it.
Yeah, but you were here first, you get extra points.
Thanks Lenny.
Does it matter where we sit, you want us up here?
Sure, that would be nice representative.
The microphones will pick you up, will pick up your voice, so you don't have to get near a microphone.
Did you bring the money?
Did you bring a checkbook?
The senator has a checkbook with him, he is.
Thank you.
Does it have a seal on it?
We'll have to, I won't worry about the seal if it's the money.
Thank you for coming.
Oh, thank you for having us. Nice to see you.
Welcome.
Good to see you, how are you? For everybody at home, we have Senator Bruce Tar and Representative Lenny Mara in our meeting this evening, so they're going to give us some information about the state budget and how Groveland's going to get everything they need.
Just like every other town, absolutely.
Say that to everybody, don't- Okay, does somebody want to start? Would you like to, you want us to ask you some tough questions or?
Well, why don't, why don't we begin by giving you an overview just quickly and then you can ask questions and we both have some information to provide you with and we can walk you through that. But I think the most important thing is to realize that the timing of our discussion tonight is very good because we're in the midst of developing the budget for the coming fiscal year and as everyone probably knows, the governor has filed his version of that budget and because he's a new governor, he got some additional time, which was very helpful given the fact that we had storm events and things that consumed a lot of time. And that budget does pay particular attention to some local aid accounts and we can talk about that. In fact, we have the breakdowns of what the governor's budget proposes versus what you're getting currently in this fiscal year. But the governor does pay particular attention to those accounts like Chapter Seventy for Education and unrestricted general government aid, also referred to as UGA. And at this point, we are projecting a fairly healthy increase in revenue. In other words, the budget revenue is slated to go up by somewhere around four, maybe a little bit more than that percent, which is pretty healthy, but the difficulty is that we had in the current fiscal year a number of shortfalls that had to be addressed to the tune of almost a billion dollars that had to be taken out of the current budget and adjustments need to be made for next year as well. So even though revenue is fairly robust, the expenses are as well and there is a deficiency or a structural imbalance that has to be addressed in the coming fiscal year. So the point that we're at right now is that revenues seem to be on target from what has been projected and that will likely be the case for next year, but it's too soon to tell. And the House is about to produce its version of the budget and I'll let Lenny speak to that, but they'll debate that in April and then we will debate our version of the budget in May and the goal is to go to conference so that we're done with that process at the very latest by the beginning of July so that we can start the new fiscal year with a budget in place. So we're about one-third of the way through the process. The House has to go, then we have to go. And one of the things that is important for us to come is so that we can hear from you about some of your priorities. We both have asked and you have responded with some lists of things that you think are important, those are very helpful to us. But this conversation is very helpful in guiding us as we take up our respective budgets in the House and the Senate too, so the timing is very good and I'll stop there and see if Lenny wants to offer something.
Yeah, just very briefly, in broad numbers, the budget's going from about thirty-six billion to about thirty-eight billion, if I'm correct in broad numbers, which is a big increase and it's been going up just about every year, by about a billion a year, this year almost two billion. But a lot of that is just going to this thing we call, you know, healthcare and that eats up a large part of the budget. So it always seems like we never seem to have enough for the things we want to do with Chapter Seventy, Chapter Ninety, road and bridge repair, school construction, et cetera, because a large part of the budget now goes to healthcare. But I see Chapter Seventy on the top of your list and I have to say, I don't think this is a subject that this delegation spends more time on, not just Senator Tar and I, but Representatives Brad Hill, Brad Jones, Senator Kate. We've all been fighting for more Chapter Seventy eight. We realize the formula seems to be shortchanging cities and towns in this area, especially towns like Groveland. I feel that we're getting shortchanged, this formula's been in place for over twenty years, right Bruce? And it was supposed to be reviewed every couple of years, I don't think it has been, but we are going to fight for at least more funding going towards it if we cannot adjust the formula because we are hearing your calls, we do realize that the larger cities seem to be getting more of that funding and smaller towns seem to be getting shortchanged a little bit in it. But it is something that we do try to address every single year and we're getting our wagons in a circle as far as doing that. We've had meetings at several occasions, we're going to have another one with Triton probably this week or next week on that very subject. And like I said, we probably fight that issue more than just about anything else, even more than erosion on Plum Island. I think we talk, we fight about Chapter Seventy more than anything else.
I would pick up on that point and Lenny's absolutely correct. When the original Education Reform Act was developed in nineteen-ninety-three, it built in periodic reviews of the foundation budget, which is the basis not only for what you're required to spend on education, but also what you're required to pay for education. And those periodic reviews, to the best of my knowledge, never occurred. So we have been fighting to get a foundation budget review commission for the last several years and I'm pleased to report that we actually did in the current year's budget and that commission has been meeting and holding public hearings to determine, is the foundation budget acting appropriately? That's the good news. The caution that I would issue is that the commission has spent a lot of time looking at the question of, does the foundation budget adequately cover the expenses that are mandated by the state in education? The caution is that they have not spent as much time, if any at all, on the formula by which we pay for those expenses. And as you recall, there's two elements to this, there's the foundation budget where we add up all the things that go into education and figure out what that should cost and then there's the requirement of local contribution, which is where we say, okay, of that cost, here's what the municipalities need to pay. And it's fine to address this and we need to address it, but we have not addressed this yet in the foundation budget review commission and this is a very important piece of it. Because as Lenny referenced, we have a lot of issues around what should be the split, for instance, between a community's property value and its income. Because sometimes in our part of the world, you have homes that have been in families for many, many years and it looks like we have a lot of property wealth, but yet the people living in those homes may well be on a fixed income and didn't necessarily buy that home, it's been in the family for all those years. So if you look at equalized property value disproportionately, it disadvantages us. So without going on to a long diatribe, both parts of this equation are important. I think we're going to get a good look at the expense side, but not necessarily on the revenue side. But just to delve into this just a little bit deeper, the reason looking at the expense side is important is because the foundation budget under-recognizes some expenses that we have to pay for. One of them is the assumed enrollment of students in special education. There is no doubt that you have all had conversations with the finance committee, with the school committee, and this always comes up as a subject of discussion at town meeting. The foundation budget assumes a very low number for how many kids you have in SED. The consequence of that, it assumes that your net school spending actually has to be lower than it really does and the consequence of that is that delta that determines your state aid isn't necessarily calculated appropriately. So that's just one issue and we could talk about others, but that's a big one. And retired teacher health insurance is another one that's under-reflected and the cost of energy is another one. So, good news is we're getting an analysis on one side, bad news is it may not be as complete as it needs to be on the other side.
Special ed services is really underrepresented, represented in the Chapter Seventy foundation fund, clearly. It's been for many years. And I know you fight, and that's a good word, but how do you fight? The engaging with a commission or promoting the creation of commission, which now thankfully we have? Promoting your own legislation or supporting favorable legislation? And also, you can also fight on specific line items and say, you know, that line is not big enough to do that. Is that about right, how you guys fight?
Joe, that's like one of those Rodney Dangerfield, one question in twenty-seven parts. So let me try to get at it and say, first of all, your premise is correct that the assumed enrollment in SED is low, but there's an additional problem. And the first thing I want to go back to for just a moment, and I don't want to monopolize the conversation, but one of the difficulties that our legislative delegation in the area, not just the two of us, have had over the last several years is that if we try to advocate to put more money in, let's say, Chapter Seventy, because the formula is dysfunctional, we can pour in big buckets of money at the top and very little comes to our communities. So we've changed gears a little bit when you talk about line items. It is more effective in some ways for us to advocate for the SED circuit breaker because the amount of money you get doesn't depend on a formula per se as much as- because the amount of money you get doesn't depend on a formula per se as much as Chapter 70 does. Same is true for regional school transportation. So we've been saying, let's boost those accounts because they don't have a convoluted formula that takes money and puts it in the wrong places. And we have advocated for those two accounts. In fact, in the current year's budget, we had gotten to a point that, in my recollection, we've never reached in terms of regional school transportation. Unfortunately, it had to be 9C cut to be able to balance the budget. But the point is, we established that high watermark. And that was a priority for us because regional school transportation is the same roughly, not regarding on where you are in the state. So that's a good account for us to shoot for. Spen circuit breaker, the same thing. We always try to get that 75% number. That's so important.
Right.
But let me give you an example of an area where we think we can make some more progress. First of all, whenever you talk about changing Chapter 70, the biggest challenge is developing consensus. Because if we had 200 people in this room and said, do you think Chapter 70 works? Probably 200 hands would go up and say it doesn't. But if we said, how do we fix it, we'd probably get 200 different answers. So we look for places where we can build some consensus. And here's one that we think is developing. The aid that you get from the state for special education is only, as you know, for those kids that reach the threshold of four times foundation budget. There's a lot of us that think that there are other kids that we could be helping with. Such that if we found ways to do earlier interventions, particularly in areas like literacy and phonics, that we might have a greater impact, particularly the younger the child is. But right now, the state doesn't give you any help with that. In other words, we help you when the student reaches this extraordinary threshold, but everybody underneath doesn't. But at the same time, we say to you from Beacon Hill, you should have inclusion. You should bring more students in. So it's a mixed message because if you include students, the cost is likely to be less. And yet we don't give you any assistance for that. So one of the things that we've been working on is to get a study done that looks at the way that we deliver special education and says, can we identify some cost-effective interventions that the state could help to pay for before you reach the circuit breaker level? It would be potentially cost-effective for us and it certainly would be cost-effective for you. So as we look to fight the fight, we have to be very strategic. And we will always fight the Chapter 70 fight. But frankly, it has not borne fruit. And we've been fighting for a very long time. So we're starting to look at other things that we can address. And by the way, perhaps you know, maybe you don't, there is talk again that there could be a lawsuit among communities challenging the Chapter 70 formula. And there was a meeting in Ipswich several months ago where there were quite a few people from different communities trying to build consensus around what that lawsuit would look like. And I would tell you that oftentimes in Massachusetts, lawsuits about education aren't about winning in court. They're about leveraging the legislature to do the right thing. And we may be headed down that path.
Well, I hope not because I believe that inclusiveness and early intervention is the way to go. I think a lot of the things that we've heard in surrounding cities and towns is that people don't want to pay the bill. And that's the wrong approach. We have an obligation to give every child the opportunity to have a good life. And if we can reach them earlier and provide some services before they reach the threshold, I think it's the best idea I've heard in a long time. Well done.
Well, we'll continue to fight for it.
What's happened with us here, and I don't know how many communities you all represent, how many cities and towns, but we have, if we're not number one, we're in the top five. We have a very peculiar situation. The Pennsyltucket Regional School budget is up 2.15%. Our assessment went up 6.8%. All of a sudden, this year, we're richer because of the application of the formula. There's some talk around town that we should call the legislators and see if they would take a look at that formula. I have fear that if they do that, they might open up Pandora's box and find us even more richer. But is it arbitrary? Is that formula, is there any resources that can take a look to make sure that that number is honestly attributable to us? Because we don't trust it, but we're going to pay it.
Well, let me start.
Without an override, thank goodness.
Let me, well, that's because you all are focused on managing the numbers and that's a credit to you. Let me suggest that we could ask folks from the DESE to come out here and meet publicly to talk about it.
That would be great.
I would also suggest that that can be a double-edged sword.
Okay.
And one thing that I would, I would say and ask you to consider is that the formula is largely driven by enrollment. And my cursory look at enrollment in Pennsyltucket indicated that it probably has not been growing, in fact.
We're actually losing numbers at the elementary school.
Right. So that's my concern, Joe, is that to the extent that the numbers have been, the enrollment numbers have been falling and aid is in large part dependent on enrollment.
Oh, I see.
We might have an interesting question. However, I'm always one that believes that we should be honest with people and we should tell them what the facts are. And then we can deal with it. So what do you think? I think it would be a good thing to do.
Who is DESE?
Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. Used to be DOE, Benny, in the old days.
So the only hope and a prayer we have now is to hold our hope for the UGGA, the UGA. If that doesn't get trampled on, then we'll only get stuck with 6.8%.
Well, I'm a little more optimistic than that. Let's look at the other side of the ledger. We'd love to see more funds come in. But how about the other side, if we could just reduce some of the expenses? Because, you know, if you Google things like per pupil spending by state, Massachusetts is among the top. We spend more than just about any state in the Union when it comes to education. And you can even do that worldwide. We're probably got the most expensive school system in the world. So when I talk about that to educators, teachers, principals, superintendents, the first words that come out of their mouth is unfunded mandates. Because we down in Beacon Hill sometimes, with the best of intentions, make you do things that just simply cost a lot of money. And that's accrued over a lot of years. And we currently have a bill looking at exactly that. There's a committee working on it to see which of these mandates are still necessary and can we do away with some of them? Because, you know, every dollar you save is like a dollar earned. If you can just cut spending by a certain amount, then it's just like getting a little bit more money as well. So I'm trying to be optimistic about that. And hopefully, we can institute something like that sooner rather than later. So you decide to institute some savings right now. Because there's a lot of things we dump on you that we require you to do that perhaps have.
Without new funding.
You know, because it's been over a lot of years. So things we asked you to do 10, 15 years ago, perhaps, we don't have to do now. And, you know, I just had this conversation with Jeff Mulqueen, the superintendent of Pennsyltucket. That guy does a great job. I mean, you look at the results, our testing at Pennsyltucket is above average. It's a great school. His per pupil spending is below average. He does a lot with a little. But even there, there's a lot of mandates that we dump on him that he's required to abide by, but we don't give him the funding for it. So if we can address that, that's just as good as addressing that formula in my eyes.
If we phase out MCAS, I don't know what the update is on that. If we phase out MCAS and bring in the other system part, that is a huge unfunded mandate. I mean, just the technology component is requiring, I mean, I'm trying not to be, I am generally an optimistic person.
No, it's the thing like that, Joe, that we need to hear because.
This year, we got $20 more per child. It's like, I think our computer component for the new part testing is about 10 times that. Computers we don't own, that we have to go buy or lease. It's frightening.
There you go.
I'm glad I'm not on the school committee.
If you were to sit here and, as a selectman, and you see that the three different towns and we're the highest in the education right now. And we try to get the answers during the year. It's hard. And sometimes, what's coming from the State House to here, we can't get the answers. We've been asking for a long time. And in the interim, it keeps going up and up and up. So it would be nice to be able to get the answers on a timely manner. And I understand it takes a long time for government to move and what have you. But this year alone, we're going up again. And, you know, what I was saying is, they say it's tied to home sales. Home sales are getting better in our area and what have you.
Assess value.
Assess value. You know, we went through a period here, this is probably one of the three towns where we had a lot of foreclosures. We had a lot of bank-owned property and what have you. It's starting to get turned over now. So now we'd be penalized for that. And that's how, I would like to see them take a look at it, you know, on a yearly-type basis, you know. And I know it's asking a lot, but I'm trying to look on behalf as a selectman and sitting where I am for my town.
There's nothing wrong with asking for information and we will help you get it.
Yeah.
And as I said, if you want to do it, we can bring out the folks from DESE.
Yeah, I'd like to see that.
Not that long.
Didn't Triton, yeah, we just didn't Triton.
Yeah, definitely.
And so we'll do it.
We owe it to our taxpayers, you know what I'm saying? I mean, they're getting taxed and taxed and taxed and it's going up and up. And I mean, it really, at least me, we owe it to the respect of the taxpayers.
It's a fair request. I mean, just to try to drill into it a little bit. So the foundation budget on the payment side has really two factors. One is the average income in a community. And I would suggest the way we calculate that has some issues. And the other one is the equalized property valuation. And the equalized property valuation surely incorporates sales and comps.
Right.
So the property values are going up.
Right.
Right? And so there are issues about how you weight those two things, income and valuation. And there are issues about even how you determine income. And so I think it's fair to ask for it to be looked at. We know the right people at DESE.
Okay.
Be happy to bring them out and say, can you explain this to everybody? The one thing I would suggest is that if we do that, we may want to invite the other communities as well. So that everyone is hearing the same thing.
For sure.
And as well, the school committee.
Yeah.
And we did it for Triton.
Right.
I think there were some very, there were some that were very surprised by what they learned.
I'm a firm believer, and my other colleagues will know, I'm a firm believer in dialogue is the best thing. You know, the more dialogue you get on something, the more you meet on it, the better off we're going to be.
Sure.
And I definitely think this is a subject that we could definitely all get together and it would be good, you know.
We'll work to set it up. It will be a little challenging to make sure we can.
We can host it right here.
Well, that would be great. I mean, wherever you want to do it, we'll work with you.
Next Monday, awesome.
Next Monday will be me and Lenny in a chat.
Well, we would really appreciate that.
Okay.
Did the governor know he was inheriting a billion-dollar shortfall?
No. The allegations, well, I shouldn't say allegations. The statements that were made by the outgoing administration was that the shortfall was much less. Obviously, that was not the case. And there were a lot of missed opportunities.
Really?
And one of them, again, not to delve into too much of what's going on at Beacon Hill as opposed to some of the things locally, but the federal government generally requires you every year to recertify folks who are on common health, mass health.
Okay.
The Medicaid program.
Right.
At some point in time, the prior administration just stopped doing it. And so we have folks that were on Medicaid who may not have been eligible. We had to redo a website that caused them to be on Medicaid, perhaps not being eligible. And the cost of that was hundreds of millions of dollars. So there's a long list, Benny, of things. But I don't think the governor expected that, but he's well aware of it. And we've worked, I think, very well with the governor as a legislature to pass very quickly two supplemental budgets to address the problem. And so I would give the majority party credit where it's due. The fact is, the governor put the solutions on the table and the House and the Senate approved them very quickly so that we wouldn't have rancor and disruption in state government. We got it done.
So people working together.
Very much so. The bigger challenge will be in the budget for the coming fiscal year, obviously, because it encompasses all of state spending and there'll be some controversial issues. I mean, one of the things right now that we're trying to move on and we have this discussion a lot is about an early retirement program. So the governor's proposal is to try to reduce the size of the state workforce by about 4,500 people. But to do it through early retirement rather than laying them off. Now, that has a cost associated with it.
A payout.
Of course.
That's right.
But the net, over 15 years, is between $3.5 and $4 billion of savings even after you make that payment. So, you know, there's been a lot of talk about, well, it costs us money to retire these folks out, and it does. But the net savings, if you have fiscal discipline not to rehire all of them
Exactly.
and only rehire some of them, are pretty substantial.
I think we're trying to back the what, 20%?
20%.
You think that will reach the local level if he doesn't get the $4,500?
People have been calling and emailing us about that, saying they want this extended to their departments as well. But the governor only controls what's in the executive branch. And that's, I think, what all applies to Bruce, right? Just in the executive.
That's correct.
You can't roll it out to the municipal sector? That's a good question, Benny.
We have in the past. We have offered the same kind of a deal, five years of service or five years of age. I would suggest that right now, it seems fairly unlikely. We have discussed it.
Because most of those people are paying into the retirement system at what, 5%, 6%? As opposed to new hires are paying what?
Between 11 and 13.
See, there's a huge difference right there.
And that's one of the reasons that it works. But it is certainly something, and if that's something that would be helpful for all of you, that would be good to know. Because it has been discussed. It just doesn't look like the prospects are very good. But if somebody could quantify the fact that it could be a lot of savings for the town, we'd love to know that because that might change our ordering of it as a priority.
We have six areas of pending legislation that the town supports and we'll roll them out in a few minutes. But if that ever became a piece of legislation, I have a feeling that we probably would support it as well.
Good.
I think maybe a lot of cities and towns would support that.
Got a lot of phone calls and emails, Benny.
Ever hearing, people would come and give testimony, what it means to each community?
That's a great idea.
The early intervention piece, why don't we put more funding into that at this point? So we're not so strapped with the, taking care of kids later on. If we invest here, we're not going to have these problems later on, I think. We get to the children, but is it more, like Head Start is a federal program, correct? Haverhill has a lot of Head Start programs. How do we address that to get more money into, so we can take care of those children that sometimes get lost?
Well, I think we are funding more kindergarten money this year than over the last year. Are you talking pre-kindergarting?
Right, those programs.
Okay.
Just a thought.
Yeah, it's just a budgetary constraint.
If we identify issues and problems early on, aren't we ahead of game later on?
Yes.
No, it makes sense. Okay, Bruce.
Yeah, no, it's a question of trying to find money for everything.
Everything, I know.
One thing Lenny touched on, I think, is really important is that the amount of the budget that's discretionary is not that large. In other words, by the time we get through debt service, retirement liability and healthcare, there isn't that much that's left. So that's why it makes it even more important that when we put ideas to save money on the table, that we take advantage of them. Because for everything we don't do, obviously, that's money that could be used for priorities like EI. So we're going to continue to offer those savings ideas in the hope that we can free up some money for other things. But it's, EI is one of those great programs that we'd all love to do, but we have to fit it in the context of everything else.
How do you feel everybody is working at the State House together, both sides of the aisle? Do you see something improved?
Big difference between Beacon Hill and Capitol Hill. No, I think we get along very well. My biggest surprise, because I'm recent, Bruce has been here a long time, but that was my biggest surprise, that the two sides actually do work exceptionally well together. And we are a distinct minority, you've got to understand.
Well, I know.
Democrats had like 80% of the House and 90% of the Senate last term. It's a little bit better this year. But they've been great, like Speaker DeLeo, Chairman Dempsey of Ways and Means. Their doors are always open. They know me on a first-name basis. They're great about, you know.
Come on in, let's talk, yeah.
Absolutely. And the committees work well together because they're joint committees. And, you know, there's a couple of rules disagreements maybe right now between the House and Senate. But the two parties seem to be getting along very well, I got to say, Benny.
You've got a bigger team.
We do get along.
I have a question, kind of, we went through our budget. And one of the things we come across on the budget was the veterans' benefits. And there was some talk that we're trying to find whatever money we can to shorten up our shortfall.
Sure.
So there was some talk that you guys might be kicking in money toward that possibly this year? Is that true or is that just talk?
Well, generally speaking, my recollection is that Section 115, perhaps, benefits. Generally speaking, we fund 75% of those and you're required to fund 25%. I don't know if the split will change, but that's certainly an item that we can research and get back to you.
Okay. It's a big number for us. I mean, it's a real big number.
Not that we begrudge veterans any.
Sure.
Oh, no, not at all. I mean, any, any help or any savings we can get helps our budget, especially where we're so tight, you know? And what is it, sixty percent of our budget goes toward the schools? I mean, we have a big chunk going toward the schools. And we have a little bit to play with to try and balance the budget, you know?
Right. So, we can, we can double check with Department of Veteran Services. I think you'll find sometimes one of the things that hurts municipal cash flow is the lag time between when you spend that money and when we provide it to you.
Right.
So that may be an issue here that we could look at.
Is it like snow and ice?
Not quite that bad.
So that reminds me, do you, does the governor, are you aware of an update with the governor's petition of the federal government for hopefully a seventy-five percent reimbursement of the extraneous snow removal?
I think he's working with.
Has he applied on the basis of an emergency?
Mm-hmm.
A comprehensive emergency in the state.
Mm-hmm.
I think it came down to, among other things, descriptions on what the feds call an emergency because this was a succession of storms that really battered us for the entire month of February. I think it was like every weekend in February, we got hit.
We have five weeks, basically.
But I think the feds look at it at each individual storm. So they think, what's the big deal, one blizzard? You know, New England always has blizzards, right? What's one more? But it was an accumulation that really did a number on us. And we never got a reprieve, it was cold the whole time as well, in addition to the record amounts of snow. But I think that's what the governor's up against, that he's fighting with FEMA right now to make it so that they understand that it was a succession of storms that really caused this disaster. So, I don't think we got an answer yet.
We don't. In fact, the, the governor had a teleconference today with the federal legislative delegation. They already agree with his request from FEMA, but they had a bit of a strategy conversation this afternoon and tried to advance that. And Lenny's got it absolutely right. The difficulty is that oftentimes FEMA assistance is geared around big events like a tornado or a hurricane. And what our folks in MIMA are trying to do is characterize it that way, saying, this was like one of those events, it just happened over a long period of time. So, I think there's a fair degree of confidence that we will see something. The two big questions are how much money and for what period of time.
Right.
And we don't have an answer.
It never stops snowing, so you could never get out from under.
Yeah, I mean, the thing that kills you, you had the MP TA that, you know, they couldn't run for a month.
Yeah.
You know, and I know in politics, I was never in politics before, I'm new at it. If you take and you put, you know, the politicians on TV and they're blame, 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 blame game, this guy quits, that guy quits. It was because we had an unprecedented winter. We had a lot of snow on those tracks, the tracks turned to ice, the trains couldn't run, the snow got up in the motors, shut those motors down, they sucked in water and they all died. I mean, I know they don't want to go on TV saying that, but I mean, that's basically what happened. I mean, we were really knocked out for a while because of that, you know? And probably a good reason to do what they did to maybe try and get some money into the MP TA to help turn it around. But it really was an unprecedented winter and they really should take a good hard look at what the towns went through, roof shoveling and what have you. And, you know, we, everyone got hit hard, homeowners and everyone, businesses. So hopefully, they do take a good look at it.
Well, one of the things that we've already looked at, and I think it's of some value, is to try to allow cities and towns to amortize the cost of snow response over a longer period of time. There's good and bad in that. You have to use that tool judiciously. Originally, the Senate's position was to allow you to go out five years. Fortunately, the House prevailed and we compromised it three years. But the, the difficulty is what happens if you get another bad winter?
Right.
You know, do you keep extending out further and further? But that was one thing. And, and the other thing that we were able to do fairly quickly, and there's some information in the packet for you about this, is get thirty million dollars out the door to cities and towns to say, look, as spring comes, at least get out and start repairing the damage that you had. And the other good news is, we expect that by the end of the week, we will have a chapter ninety vote and that will be on the governor's desk to get that money out. It'll be two hundred million dollars statewide. Again, one of the key concerns, and you asked about how we work together, there's been an agreement between the House and the Senate and the governor to get this done quickly, to get the money out the door. And we think with a pretty good degree of confidence, we'll have some good news by the end of the week on that front.
And that's on top of the thirty million dollars for pothole repair.
Right.
In addition to the pothole repair fund, I think that came out, was about a month ago?
Yeah.
So.
That's still, I think, thirty-four something change for us here, which is helpful.
Yeah.
Guys, you know.
Well, the roads are gonna be in tough shape, you know, with the snow going away.
Right.
Back to, back to the schools. Our community, our surrounding communities have always embraced traditionally technical and vocational education. We're in an agreement with Whittier, with, with part of the Whittier district. In fact, you're both invited to a summit meeting on May fourteenth at the Merrimack Public Schools, the Regional Finance Committee, and also members of the Board of Selectmen from all three towns have invited the administration of Whittier, hopefully smooth out some conflict that we have or some, some issues regarding admission policy. But one of the things that's startling to me, and I, I, I believe that my colleagues have voiced the same concern, even though we have nine outstanding students at North Shore Agricultural and Technical High School, we also have a very large bill. And we have not been able to find any document or an agreement that exists. Once they shut down Essex Aggie and they switched students over to North Shore, we're paying the bill, but I, no one can tell us if we are legally obligated to pay that bill. So we, we, we don't know if you might be able to help us through some contacts at DESE or some other area to find out is, there's some language that says when Essex Aggie shut down, everything legally transferred over to North Shore. Now, the admissions policy basically says that the student who is eligible for technical and vocational training, if the particular major is not available at Whittier, they can go to North Shore Agricultural. So specifically, the agricultural type of courses that are not available at Whittier. But we have a duty, a fiduciary duty to our town, to make sure that we're paying this bill because we're legally obligated. And I don't, we don't have the evidence that we do.
And Denise has researched it, she can't get answers.
Yeah.
So maybe. Again, she was in a call.
It's the ultimate unfunded mandate.
Oh, she did call?
Potentially.
She did.
Again, not to slight any child that's in the system.
Oh, no.
You know, we.
But maybe that's not being calculated correctly at this point. If you could help us in that area, that would be great.
We absolutely deserve those answers. I would tell you just preliminary, Joe, part of it was statutory. The trans, there were two or three different pieces of legislation that both created the new school and transferred responsibility for the new school. But we'd have to research this a little bit more to see where the town's specific obligation is created. And we'll do that.
I mean, conceptually, it, and this is my, an idea that was expressed by a finance committee member and I agreed with at, at a last meeting. Conceptually, if the obligation is not there, we would wish for the current students to phase through, all the way through and graduate, and then be done with it.
If that's possible.
If it's possible.
Well, let us find out. I'm not sure it is possible, but you deserve answers so you at least know where you stand.
Because if someone come up the line, wanted to go to that school.
Sure.
You can't discriminate and say, you're not gonna go to that school because you have the right to go there. So if we had three people wanting to go to that school, we should be able to put them in there and we should pay our due, you know, our due bill, but not overpay our bill. And that's like, you know, and when you, when you have the, what kills me about the regional school system, I mean, not the region, the vocational school system, is you have kids who are growing up that were hands-on kids. The hands-on kids were going to those schools to do the hands-on chores. It could have been at Whittier, it could have been at the Aggie. What happened is MCAS come along, what were they doing? They were training for MCAS, they changed all the curriculum and now it took the hands out of it. So now, we turn around and we have these smarter kids at Whittier and, you know, and the other kids are kind of being, I think, are kind of being left behind. So, I, I would like to pay out what we, we do, our bill is due over at the, you know, the new school, and do our bill over here. And if we can get to the bottom of what we owe, I think that's what we, we should be paying. And I don't think we have those answers.
We have seventy-three students at Whittier now. I think we pay almost a million dollars as of October fourteenth this past fall, so. And I think Dr. McQueen's office is looking into those issues too. I don't know if you've been invited to any meetings over there lately. I got a call today from some people there. But we don't mind paying what we should.
Right.
But, you know, let's take a closer look of our assessment. I think it's, we pay six percent, six percent of the Whittier bill along with.
How much?
Six.
Six?
Mm-hmm. So.
It's a big, it's a big assessment.
Yeah, it is a big assessment.
That's a big number of students.
And I know kids thrive over there. They come out of there, they, lots of them go on, go on to college and do great things and.
We don't pay for just our students. That's the problem with the, that's the controversy and hopefully you'll, you'll come to the May fourteenth.
Transportation issues and choice issues and I know it's going to be looked at closely, but.
Yeah, we would be interested in also looking at the agreement with Whittier because that, that hasn't been updated in twenty-something years either, so. So that's, that's a big meeting if you.
On the fourteenth.
On the fourteenth, at Merrimack Public Library, that would be a, hopefully, our colleagues at Whittier will attend. We've invited them, but in this environment, there's some question as to even, we might have a conversation with ourselves. All the cities and towns are a little concerned about the admissions policy. Kind of switching gears between that other issue about whether we have an legal obligation to pay for North Shore. That's, that's actually separate from admissions.
Well, thank you both.
Thanks for having us.
Thank you.
We really appreciate you coming up. This means a lot to the community and people that are here and.
We're gonna leave you with some paper?
You are?
And these are just packets that go over mostly last year versus this year and what the numbers are looking at like so far. And you're welcome.
Just leave this, because Denise has.
I have a sheet as well, so.
There's, there's some pending legislation that the town supports. We wanted to make sure that you, you saw them.
I gave them copies.
Oh, you did, okay, okay. All right, very good. Excellent.
Thank you. I haven't seen you on Fox, where have you been?
They have changed the station.
I know.
Yeah, big time.
Since we're on camera, I haven't heard my comments, but.
Seen a lot of familiar faces, have vanished.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do you know Tom Samaelock?
No.
No. He used to be on there. It was, he went on with the ex, sure. He was a commentator, but he was on with that, our, oh my God, I shouldn't open my mouth. The, the girl there, that was our.
Marianne.
Oh, Marie Stefano's.
Yeah, he'd go on there and he would be a commentator, he was my cousin. He went on with the Salucci. Salucci, he'd be on sometimes with him. And the other guy was out of like the Cape area, you know.
Joe Malone.
Joe Malone.
Yeah.
Yeah, they'd be on there.
He was very friendly with those guys.
Yeah.
They were funny together.
Thanks for coming. Yeah, the station has changed radically.
Yeah, sorry.
I've been getting a lot of calls, so just sort of.
Good to see you.
For the record, I haven't pulled away, they have.
Anytime, just say the word.
Yeah, thanks.
Great to see you.
If I call you, we can talk about that.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Good to see you. Thank you. All right.
Thank you both, we appreciate you taking the time.
I saw your article in the Gl- your letter in the Gloucester Times about openness and.
We, we had a good tour around the state.
Is there any discussion about implementing open meeting law at the state?
Yes, a lot.
A lot. So they play under the same rules that we have to.
That will be a hot topic of discussion over the coming year, Joe.
Good.
Absolutely.
Excellent.
Well, please call us anytime.
You will, we have your numbers.
We'll come back and visit too. We, we love to talk and we'll get some more information. You've given us some action items, we'll get to work on those too.
Maybe we'll have a summit with, and we'll host it for the other two towns and school committee. You can come back. Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, just combobulated here, where are we going? Warrant discussion?
Yes, so I did add that, I didn't know if you were having, planning to have any budget and warrant article discussion tonight. As you know, you're meeting tomorrow to formally make your votes on the budget and the warrant article. So, I did budget, I did schedule it in case you wanted to talk. I included in your packet the most recent, there were a couple changes that were identified last Thursday when we met. And I did put a cover sheet that identifies, I know this board was discussing the positions that were requested, so what the impact would be if you decided not to fund one of the positions and how the money would play out. So I did just put that in there just for your information.
Okay. Well, we have a lot of people here. I know we had public comment earlier. Is the Finance Committee coming back in to sit with us?
Nope.
No.
They are making their, they're making their recommendations and going through.
They're making the recommendation right now?
They'll be making their recommendations this evening. They're still going through that, that's where I was. They may or may not be here tomorrow with you. Some members may be here, but I don't know if we'll have the full committee here tomorrow.
Okay. What's your pleasure, Bill and Joe, at this point?
Just going over the budget.
Right, do you want to?
I don't have a problem with going over it. I mean, it would be nice to hear what the finance has to say. But, I mean, we still need to make our own recommendations, I think.
Correct. Well, you three will make your, if you want to separate the budget from the warrant. So the Finance Committee will not be making their recommendations on the warrant articles by tomorrow. They have until town meeting floor to do that.
So they're going through the budget at this point?
They're going through the budget right now. So they are hoping, and again, they're hoping to have their recommendations on the budget done this evening. If not, they're going to convene a meeting for Thursday night.
Okay.
This group is meeting tomorrow night to make your recommendations. So if you wanted to discuss warrant articles while people are here, you could certainly do that. Or if you want to talk about the budget, like I said, I just, I scheduled it because I know there's a lot of discussion going around, so.
Well, thanks, Betty. On Article seventeen, the article for the Affordable Housing, my opinion is that that would be my only recommendation for removing that article only because it's been suggested by the chair of the Affordable Housing, the folks who put that together to withdraw the article for reconsideration in the future. I, I know that there's been discussion around town and we had asked for some information and I thought it was something that maybe at some future point, we'd be able to discuss it as a committee, as a five-member board. But my general feeling is that we want to allow all the articles that have been presented on town meeting and that we continue our role. And our role is just to advise, along with the FinCom, our role is to advise town meeting how to vote for stuff, whether we are in favor of it or not. So, only, only seventeen would be the one that I would recommend removing completely. And.
Denise, did you know Bruce was going to make that recommendation?
I didn't know.
He did come in and he felt that.
Oh, I was here, but I wasn't aware that he was making that.
Yeah, he recommended that.
No, I was here for that.
So that's, that's going to be removed?
Yes.
At the recommendation of the committee?
Yes.
But I think everything else should be defended and debated. That's my thought.
Okay. Do you want to go through each article quickly?
Mm-hmm.
Sure.
You want to do that? Well, we would accept chapter ninety money.
Correct. So, I mean, do you want me to go through them?
Yeah, would you do that?
Sure. So, the first two articles are standard, chapter ninety. Article two, right now, we don't have an amount. I don't know if it was mentioned when I was out of the room, but we don't have an amount projected for chapter ninety monies for next year. If we don't have an amount by the end of the week, we'll use the current year's amount as a placeholder.
Okay.
Article three is another standard article about the VFW to appropriate nine hundred dollars to pay their expenses and their utilities. Article four, um, I mentioned last week, the electric department met and voted to, um, continue the same pilot agreement of thirty-five thousand. That is in addition to currently, they own the building at nine seventy Salem, I guess. Um, they do not occupy it yet, so it's still taxable at a hundred percent. Um, so they are paying the tax on that. When they do occupy the property, uh, the portion of the building they occupy will become tax exempt, but the portion of the building that is leased, they will still be responsible to pay tax on. And they have made a verbal commitment that, um, they will continue to pay the difference of what's going to be tax exempt. Um, so they are all taxpayers. They were all, um, obviously do not want to see the town lose revenue because they're occupying a new facility. So they are planning to make the town whole, um, with that payment.
That sounds like a favorable to me.
Favorable to me too.
Yes.
Are we supposed to go through and say favorable and not favorable?
No, that's really tomorrow. Tomorrow you'll actually vote on them. Unless you want to vote on things, you can. Um, Article five will be the budget. Um, Articles six and seven, which you really haven't, um, I don't know if you've looked at, is the water departments and the water and the sewer departments budgets. They are asking for some increases that were not, um, that obviously weren't the last year. So, um, you may want to just take a look at some of the amounts. The finance committee met with the water and sewer department tonight. But that's, that's their standard articles for monies.
I'd like to hear what, um, finance committee, what, what their feelings are on that, so.
Would you know what, um, Denise, why the, there's a, probably the biggest jump on the Article seven for the water is the expenses from sixty-six-six to seventy-nine-nine? Because I don't have any detail.
Um, yes, I have. Give me a minute to pull that up. I do have some information on theirs.
That's the biggest driver.
Um, I believe some of that is they're looking at some sewer work to be done. Um, because that's the, Article seven is the sewer department. Article six is the water department.
Right.
They had some changes they were looking to do. I have to find their, um, information. While I'm looking for that, Article eight is the standard article to vote to fix all of the, um, elected and appointed officers. That's the standard article, um, really going through and revoting the affirmative action on the budgets. Article nine is. Um, Article nine is to use, um, free cash, um, which will become water department retained earnings, um, to cover some water mains. They're also looking to do some work on their water mains that they are, um, hoping to have the assistance of the highway department. Um, the highway department is doing some drainage work, um, and they're going to sort of piggyback on and do some water main replacement at the same time on the same streets. That would be Article nine.
I hope that they always coordinate with each other so we're not ripping up one street for water lines and then finding we're coming along and ripping the street up again. I mean, that's.
And if I recall, this is for Governor's Road, which is apparently one of the worst roads in town for drainage.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so that's why they're doing it at the, oh yeah, Governor's Road. That's why they're doing it at the same time.
I almost lost my car there the other night. And the, and the water, the water end of it was coming out of the water budget.
So the water department is paying for obviously the mains. They're paying any overtime costs incurred by the highway department, um, any materials that the highway department's using for do those water mains. But the wa- the highway department is actually gonna do a lot of the work for them. Article ten, uh, we discussed briefly the other night, that's the capital improvements. Um, and I know normally the capital article is broken down into individual articles. It's actually not necessary. You can, this is the capital plan that the capital improvement committee recommended as a whole. So I did include that and just identified in the article, um, the different funding sources. So I know you've all seen their, uh, recommended, um, request and voted on several of the items. So that is Article ten. Article eleven is also what we discussed last week and, um, Mike Nelligan from Powers and Sullivan sort of reiterated the need to do something on our OPEB liability, our other post-employment benefits. So Article eleven is simply to take the step to establish the trust fund.
Just establish.
It just establishes. We, we do not have a mechanism to fund it this year, um, but right now, this is what people are looking for, to make sure that we actually know that we have a liability, that we are taking some action. So this is just to establish the fund and hopefully going forward, we will have a mechanism to fund it.
This is what I was going to ask, Denise. Do you think next year, where do we start out? Twenty-five thousand, fifty thousand? Wouldn't, I mean.
I mean, I think you need to see where we stand with the budget as a whole.
We have to wait and see.
Correct. So next year, we should have some, you know, we're hoping to have better free cash standing at the end of next year. We're hoping to, um, have our tax, taxes in order. We are starting off, or if, if the article for capital goes forward, uh, we will be starting off obviously with debt payments for the fire truck and the console. So, um, you know, as I've spoken to this group in the past, um, supporting the capital items to be borrowed may mean sacrifices down the road with other capital projects if we can't afford them. Um, so right now, we are.
Everybody should keep that in mind when they start asking for things and, uh, kind of getting the nod from capital or anybody else. I mean, this is, should be a priority for us before we find ourselves, um, in a mess.
I, I, I mean, you know, as I outlined last week, I do think we should have, we should implement financial reserve policies and those three items specifically. Stabilization fund, your OPEB trust, and I think the town should look at establishing a capital stabilization so that, again, you save money every year and put it aside for those larger capital purchases. Obviously, if you're putting small amounts, it'll take a while to get seven fifty, but you could start paying for some items every year through the capital stabilization and not straight cash. So I think that we should come up with, um, healthy level of reserves, a percentage of our budget that we want to see in those reserve accounts and really make a commitment to fund them.
I know I'm being repetitive, but for other people, because we've talked about this before, when, when we took out the seven hundred thousand or so, uh, from stabilization to take care of the issue with the Hable dump, we have not put any of that money back into stabilization. So you're also proposing a capital stabilization fund for capital purchases.
Correct. So stabilization would be for anything that town meeting approves to third. So, but capital would be dedicated for capital expenditures.
And the OPEB, which is the other post-employment benefits liability trust, which Betty just brought up, and of course, that's what the auditor had shared with us as well. It's not a bad idea because that could be legally mandated if it turns into law.
And I do believe in the near future, it will be. I think, um, you know, as he said, it came about in two thousand nine that we were, you know, had to start reporting it. Um, the issues have been swirling around. More and more communities sort of jumped on initially and established trust funds. Um, I think, you know, as he identified, three or four communities, one of which is Weston. I mean, you're talking communities that are triple A bond rating. That have plenty of resources to, to, to really fully fund or close to fully fund their OPEB accounts. Um, but I think a good step is establishing it and then, yes, committing to, even if it's ten thousand, anything that we can commit on an annual basis.
In the, in one way, we, obviously, we talked about this before, one way of getting there would be to try and, obviously, we can't do it this year. We don't have any extra money to do it this year. So what, how I would look at it is we'd go out and try and look at our back taxes and, you know, land what we, you know, we may have or whatever, and try to use that money to try and get them into that accounts and build those accounts with that.
Correct. So next year, so the hope really would be that next year, or at the end of this fiscal year, we'll be in a better financial position, that we have free cash. So that at next year's special town meeting, we could allocate free cash to those three, uh, reserve accounts.
Right.
Um, so that you're not paying for it out of the budget. You're using free cash or, um, other reserves that may come around.
By the way, that tax title inventory, did I hear correctly, um, that it's something like around two hundred and forty thousand?
Well, we have four hundred and ninety thousand in outstanding taxes is what we had at the end of last year.
Well, I'm talking about the, uh, the old, okay, so that's, that's a lot. That's a lot more than I thought.
Yes.
And then we have property and no property, but we have some property, right?
We're still trying to figure out what we legally have foreclosed on and on. So we obviously have the property that we know we own.
Right.
And then there are the properties that.
Potentially it could be more.
We've, yes. Or less, if we didn't legally foreclose on them, yes. So that we're still working through. Um, okay. Any other questions on the OPEB?
No, great. Thank you.
We realize how important it is. We need to do it. Absolutely.
Yes. And like I said, this article is simply to establish the trust, so, um, hopefully town meeting will understand how necessary, at least that part is. And then funding it is another, you know, the town would have to buy into the same commitment of, you know, putting aside money for reserves. Um, Article twelve is the revolving fund for VZ Park. Um, the request this year, um, has increased slightly. Uh, Mike, I'm sorry, do you know, was it eighty thousand last year? Yes, it went from eighty to ninety thousand is what they're requesting, um, to spend in that revolving fund. Article thirteen is the revolving fund for the Pines Recreation Boat Ramp. Uh, that amount of five thousand has, is the same as it's been. Article fourteen is the, uh, revolving fund for the ZBA. Um, that amount has not changed. Article fifteen is the revolving fund for the Bagnell School Summer Program. Um, that amount has not changed. I don't know if you, um, went over any of the pending legis- legislation, but just for instance, the very first one, which is streamlining municipal finance. There is an article, um, before the state right now that would eliminate the need to reauthorize revolving funds every year. That in order to help municipalities and again streamline their town meeting, you would establish it once and only need to come before town meeting if you wanted to make any changes, rescind it, increase the amount. So there may be, you know, maybe next year that we don't have to vote these, um, repetitive accounts just because we're required by law right now to do so. So that may be more streamlined in the future. Article sixteen is the first of the CPC articles and that one is for the Groveland Community Trail. Um, Article seventeen is the, um, article that was just withdrawn by the Affordable Housing Committee. Article eighteen is the community preservation, uh, restoration and preservation of the River View Cemetery's historic entrance.
May I ask a question about, um, should that project come in less than seventy-five thousand? Is, is it seventy-five?
Yes.
Does the money go back into the CPA?
Yes, so they have three years with the project. So if, if they do everything they need to in that first piece and it's sixty thousand, fifteen would sit in there until we closed that project out. Um, or if they needed to do additional work to the wall, that's part of that, they could do it with that seventy-five thousand.
But that's, that is dedicated to the archway and?
The historic entrance.
Entrance, right.
Yes.
Now, can they use the money? Could they use part of that money for another project or if they're doing it? Let's say they're in there and it's not the archway and they want to, or something else comes up. It has to strictly be for the archway, the wall and the, the tour?
If you pull the money, when you close it, you pull the money back into CPA, then you, you can reintroduce that money if something else did come up.
Correct. It would roll back up to the available funds that they're gonna operate for future projects.
So you again could say we're working on another part of.
Not during that cycle, the current cycle.
Correct. They can't use it for cemetery drainage or.
Okay.
Preserving, tombstones, or they can't do anything like that.
So there's been a write-up for this article and, and it's specifically saying what will be done in the article.
All of them do. Every article, right.
Pretty detailed, yeah.
Article nineteen is for the restoration and preservation of the main building at VZ Park with windows and an entrance and fireplace work. Article twenty, um, is the preservation of historical documents and objects at the Langley Adams Library. Article twenty-one is the planning for the improvement of Groveland Square. Article twenty-three is the standard, um, community preservation, um, account to show where the money is being transferred. So they have twenty thousand for administrative expenses, fifty thousand open space, fifty thousand historic resources and fifty thousand to community housing.
Denise, does that mean there's monies to do the administrative, it's, it's just not a flat twenty, right? Is it?
It's twenty that goes, that's added into the administrative expense account.
So overall, how much money would be available?
I, I don't know what, what's in the account right now.
Okay.
So yes, if you're identifying if that's where we would take money for assisting with all the procurements, yes, it would be.
Mike had a question for Denise.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I was just gonna comment on that, Betty. What that means is that we can't spend more than that amount in any year. Typically, we don't.
Okay.
But, um, we, I think like Denise says, if we want to negotiate something with the committee about covering some of our time for the town.
All right. Okay, thank you. That's what I was, because it, it's a lofty amount of work.
Right. And just to clarify, it's not my time. It's to hire somebody. Yes. Yes. So it wouldn't be to pay me. It would be to pay somebody. Yes.
Yeah, well, that's what I mean. The other, the other thing, sorry, the other thing Denise is that, uh, I think Denise and I talked about this, but what Denise has to have, and she apparently already has it, is all the CBA proposals. So that going forward, two or three months or, so that's over a year goes by, and she knows exactly what the proposal was voted to cover.
Right.
By the CPC. In the past, that wasn't always the case.
All right. Good.
Mike, actually, do you have an extra set of hard copies on that? I don't have hard copies of those.
Yeah, I can get them.
Okay. Because I can start files on all the projects.
So if we go back to what Betty said a minute ago, is, and we talked about this the other night, if a lot of these proposals went through, um, and they went up to bid, possibly could go up to bid all at the same time. Possibly be on the ground, under construction. We have a building inspector. We have electrical inspector and the inspectors would do their job. But again, you, you were stating that you're gonna be guilty and oversee the projects?
Well, so it depends. I mean.
The committees would do it as well?
Well, it depends. So it depends on how the articles are, you know, some of the projects have, you know, committees or consultants. So with affordable housing, they hired a consultant to do that. Whereas the boat ramp and rehabilitation to that, it's me going out there and doing that project. Um, Shanahan Field, it was me going out there, meeting with the contractors. So, you know, I'm sure the committees would want to do their own oversight.
Right.
But we don't have a project manager. And unless one is built into their own proposal, given the scope of work.
Right.
There isn't one.
And that's what I was getting at is because, um, I've known projects that people have criticized that they didn't get done for whatever reason. They blame the committee or what have you. To try and stop that and to try and prevent that, between the committee and you, is there money ever to find someone that could run the project and keep an eye on it? So, you know what I'm saying? That it's better managed or whatever. Not that I'm saying you're not gonna manage, I'm saying they're not gonna manage it, but then we're not gonna have this argument saying, hey, this didn't get done for whatever reason. It went over budget or what have you. You know what I'm saying?
Well, I think when you get into that kind of money, you know, there's only so much that twenty thousand in their administrative line will cost. So if it's not built into the project, again, most of the more expensive projects will have a component built in for a consultant to do that work or a project manager. Anyone that's using engineering firms, you know, anything like that would include a project manager.
Right.
Um, if they don't, then it's really up to, you know, sort of a combination between CPC, sort of keeping an eye on it, me, the committee, the, that's really what needs to be done with it. Article twenty-four is more of a standard, um, article. Again, it's to move money from the conservation commission fees into their, um, purchase of service account to cover their operating costs. Article twenty-five is a request from conservation, um, to make the following changes to the wetland protection bylaws. And with this, uh, bylaw request, they are looking to, um, Mike, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it's just to change the area in which a lot of the, um, bylaws. So currently, it's a hundred feet on some places. They want to make that two hundred feet or add two hundred feet. Um, I'm sure Mike can speak more eloquently to what this article covers.
More clearly defines the River Protection Act where every broken stream and river is covered by this two hundred foot buffer. In the bylaw, when it was originally written, it only referenced the Better Back Rivers.
So can I, sorry.
This is gonna update it, update our bylaw so it doesn't conflict with what the Rivers Protection Act says.
Can I ask a question on that? I- if it's two hundred feet within any body of water, would we be at a potential for seeing our new growth decrease? Because people couldn't put on decks and porches and things if there's a stream in their backyard or, are, are we risking our new growth numbers with that?
No, because, um, typically, just because it says, um, you know, that there's a two hundred foot buffer, what that means is that you have to file for a permit. And then depending upon what people usually, well, both of them, sit down with them and figure out how to get their project done. Put the right kind of erosion controls in and protection for whatever the resource area is. So, um, it's very rare that the commission just totally denies something.
Okay.
There's a, Mike, there's a lot of, um, as you probably know, because you're the poor guy that gets it all, but there's a lot of spin out there on this one, um, article. So to clarify it, if I was to buy a lot in Groveland and it had a stream in the back of my property, my lot doesn't, because it might have, you know, two hundred and fifty or three hundred feet of frontage from the, from the stream to the end of my lot. You're not saying to the, the people in Groveland, this is gonna say you can't build a lot there. You're willing to let the people come in, you're willing to let them sit down with you and you're willing to have the dialogue to possibly let them build a house there.
Right.
Okay. Under the conditions of the conservation or what have you.
Right, exactly.
I think a lot of people are looking at this, this article that two hundred feet, we're not gonna be able to build, the growth in Groveland's going down. So I'm just trying to clarify.
Yeah. No.
Okay.
Like I say, we very rarely, um, you know, won't negotiate. It's more about. It's more about protecting the environment by having those rules in place where people aren't doing things without us knowing about it. It just requires you to actually file for the agreement.
And then, as part of that, there are the fees that you're identifying as increasing. Can you just explain, 'cause I wouldn't be able to explain that.
Those fees only come into account when the, when we have, have to hire our own consultant to review a submission by a developer. So let's say a developer wants to, they're gonna put in a fifteen home subdivision, they'll obviously, they'll have their wetland scientists, they'll come in and come in with a whole plan. Usually when it's that sophisticated, we can't look at it in enough detail to determine if anything there we disagree with or anything is wrong. So we have the ability to hire our own consultant, paid for by the developer too. And the fee to do that hadn't been changed in over twenty years. So, we ran into an instance last, a couple of years ago. I know Betty probably recalls because the selectmen helped us by getting town council involved in it because we couldn't afford to hire our own help to determine what the, the developer was saying. So this is gonna update the fee, so that'll make it a little easier. Again, it's another rare case, it doesn't typically, we don't typically do that unless it's a very large project, because usually the smaller things, we're pretty familiar with.
What's the cost, Mike, to file for a permit?
For the typical homeowner, if you were going to, if you were going to do some work on your property within fifty feet of a wetland resource, then you would pay three hundred dollars, I believe it is.
I just worry about, you know, Joe Smith wanting to build a home and then he's inundated with costs and, you know, a developer, maybe a developer, a developer can absorb some of these costs, but I, I worry about, you know, we want to encourage people to live in the community and come here and raise their families, but I really have to think long and hard about a lot of these issues and maybe you and I can talk and you can explain.
Sure, sure.
Right, but like Bill said, if you wanna go out and put up a shed or a gazebo and there happens to be a stream that trickles by your house, I don't know how far away, are you gonna be stopped from doing that? That's my concern.
You can't dam streams, right? Good question.
Anything else on that before we go on?
I'm good.
Yeah, if we can keep going.
Okay, article twenty-six is to add an associate planning board member. I think it's, a lot of other committees call it an alternate. They currently have, I believe, five members, there's no one sort of in waiting, so if someone resigns or is not there to vote, they don't have any other members. So this is to add, amend the zoning bylaws by adding an associate member.
How's an associate different from a alternate?
No, it's not.
Just terminology?
They just use a different term. Article twenty-seven is the medical marijuana moratorium bylaw, or by deleting the moratorium section and adding the marijuana dispensaries bylaw. So this is obviously a lengthy bylaw that I know town council did assist them in drafting. It's pretty much a standard from other communities and what's already been approved, just a few things have been tailored to Groveland.
I guess it's lengthy.
It is lengthy, and I do know they held, I believe, two public hearings on it. So hopefully people are informed on that and those changes.
Is there a way people can pick up this warrant prior to town meeting? This is a lot of reading for people that just are walking through the door.
Yeah, as I said, when you vote it tomorrow night, I will put it on our website, I can make copies available here, so it will be available.
And they can read, they can read it to length?
Correct, they can read it as.
I know, I know we're kinda skimming through it right now, which probably is kinda confusing for the people outside watching this.
Yep. Articles twenty-eight and twenty-nine are amending the general bylaws with regards to vehicles and traffic. Those are requirements from the bridge project and part of the agreement to accept the lights and move forward with the bridge. When you did that many years ago, this was a contingency in that. And now that the project is done, we received paperwork from Mass DOT that we need to actually go forward and vote on these. I'll be honest, I wrote this up based on their recommendation, so this language may change when town council actually reviews it. But this is the actual section, so I will just, I'll briefly discuss it. So, we need to add the following new sections under the vehicles and traffic. Right lane must turn right, Elm Park westbound at Main Street. It must be identified that it's a one-way from Main Street southbound at Groveland Street Elm Park. And yield to pedestrian and crosswalk, Elm Street westbound at Station six plus fifty. I honestly don't know what that means, but that was right out of their regulations that we had to adopt.
These things are already taking place, correct?
They are taking place, it's just we have to formally put them into our bylaws, which we have not done.
And, and these are gonna be pretty much signs or just, these are just gonna be the traffic flow accepting the way it's gonna flow?
Correct, so like Betty identified, we're already doing these.
Right.
But we, they, they would never accept it into our bylaws.
Right, okay, so it's not like we're putting up signage or anything?
Correct, so town council had to certify that we comply and we don't. So these changes will actually comply with the agreement that you made with the bridge. Article twenty-nine, it's regards to stopping, standing and parking. So we're adding the following new section, stop signs, to be installed in accordance with applicable permits. All stopped at Main Street at Elm Park. So, that again, we have to put in there. Looking to renumber the article and then to amend by adding parking, it's prohibited on certain streets, Elm Park, both sides from Main Street, to limit of work. And that is the limit of work for the bridge. Again, that's taken right out of their requirements. And I believe the last article is the Board of Library Trustees, over the last several years, has been working on their bylaws. They discussed with me that they wanted to update their bylaws. I've made the recommendation to them that it really should be incorporated into the town's general bylaws, like all of our other boards and committees that have their bylaws. So this is library trustees recommended bylaw change. So it would amend the general bylaws by adding a new chapter, chapter fifteen, Board of Library Trustees. So that is all of their detailed information. The last item which I included in the warrant, which I know has not been, was Appendix A. It is the capital improvements five-year plan. So under the capital improvement article, I did reference Appendix A for their full plan. I think it's important for people to see what's coming down the pipeline, what they may be expected to vote on in the future years. So I did include that as an appendix.
So, we're not voting till tomorrow, but we can express some opinion, is that okay?
You can certainly vote, if you wanna make any votes, you can, I just have it scheduled for tomorrow.
Well, I'll, I'll go ahead and offer my opinion and if the board would like to vote on the warrants, we can do that too. If not, we'll do it tomorrow night. My opinion is that, and I'm gonna repeat this so that we, you know, we have an understanding. The law is very clear, Board of Selectmen does have the right not to allow a warrant article. But, as long as we have a mechanism to allow people to put things back onto a warrant that might be struck down by the Board of Selectmen, and that is, the mechanism is a citizen's petition. We had requested information a week ago just to understand that law a little bit better. And unfortunately, that created a firestorm of misinformation that we had already made a decision that that's what we're gonna do. And the purest form of democracy in the world still exists here in small New England towns. It's called town meeting form of government. And in that town meeting, especially that particular evening town meeting, that is a very important authority. And the Board of Selectmen doesn't have much authority that evening. All we can do is advise the town meeting, along with the FinCom, as to how people should vote. So in the spirit of keeping things the way they have been for sixty-something years, I believe that all the warrant articles should be allowed, that's opinion number one. With the exception of Article seventeen, which is the affordable housing article, because the affordable housing director has recommended to pull it so that they can reevaluate and reintroduce new concepts as to how we can fulfill our obligation in working towards building an affordable housing complex. The danger, if we don't ever work towards building affordable housing in this town, we're at two percent, we're supposed to be at ten. The danger is twofold, number one, there is some distant precedent of local aid being withheld or reduced. But the real danger is what's called forty B, a very powerful state law that can allow a builder to come in and virtually negate all of our own local bylaws and fulfill his or her ability to build an affordable housing complex with state rules. Whether it's favorable to us or not is inconsequential. But we'll have to provide the fire and the police and the sewer and the water and all the resources if we get forty B'd. So the concept, and Betty has worked, what, ten years on affordable housing?
I were, I was a commissioner in the Groveland Housing Authority for probably ten years or more.
The struggle that we've had as a town is we've not been able to have a project that we can afford. And so that's why that article is being removed. And now the new concept is we're, the affordable housing, hopefully we'll start looking at different concepts where we can perhaps shift the burden, the financing and the responsibility of building to a private concern. In other words, we market the properties that we do have. So I think Article seventeen should be removed, that's, if I voted tonight, that's what I would vote. And then the other article that I would vote differently from all others would be Article twenty-one. Again, I would allow for it to be discussed at town meeting, I think it's in the, it's in line with, with our tradition. And this is the, the planning for the improvement of Groveland Square. Even though I propose this, I don't feel I should withdraw it. I think we should allow for people to know what it's all about and for people that wanna defend it, they should defend it. But at this moment, the reason why I would not be in favor of it is because I don't have enough information on what it would cost to finance this project after the seed money that would be expended with CPA. So if I was, this is my opinion, if I was voting tonight, I would vote favorable action to all articles except Article twenty-one, the planning for the improvement of Groveland Square, and I would vote in favor of removing Article seventeen. Thank you, Betty, for allowing that.
Thank you.
Seventeen would be the affordable housing.
Right, and twenty-one is?
Twenty-one is the property that's privately owned in Groveland Square.
We'll come back next year probably with, with better, with more information, I bet you that will come back next year. And I, I would be happy to lead that effort as well, so, not ready for it this year.
Okay, thank you. I'm not ready to vote this evening, this is just one I wanna talk further about because I don't wanna hamstring anybody that wants to be building. Bill, done?
I'm not willing to vote, I wanna take and do my due diligence like I always do. And I will say, I know that I can't change town government, and I will be boisterous about this one more time, that I don't think our government is fear, where you put fifty-one people into town meeting and they raise their hand and they could put their special interest group project forward. I wish we could change it, I know we can't, but I like to be noted that I don't think it's fear. I've heard, as everyone says, we have social media, and on social media, you have a lot of people that say, I can't get out of work early enough, I can't get down there. And you have the other side where people say, well, you know, I don't get involved in town government 'cause I don't think I have a say. Well, shame on them, I mean, if they wanna get involved, they should come out and they should get involved, come out and vote and, and get down to the school. So there's two sides to every story, as, as we know. But I, I would like to see all this go right into the ballot box myself. I know we can't do it, but it's a fear, it's a fear of way of doing it. I will sit down tonight or tomorrow, I'll go through this packet, I'll come back tomorrow night with my recommendations, what I think is going to go and what isn't gonna go, and that's all I can say.
So Betty, you've seen a lot of history here, we all know the number one problem, people, people don't come out and vote. They don't come up to town meetings?
I've lived here since eighty-six, I understand what you're saying clearly.
You know, we're, we're averaging nine hundred to twelve hundred people coming out to vote. And about three hundred, is it two, three hundred for a town meeting? And we have, out of six thousand residents, we have four thousand registered voters, roughly.
And you know, if you were to try and change the system, is there a problem trying to change the system?
Well, yeah, it would be, I, I wouldn't be in favor.
I mean, I'm saying, I'm saying to try and change, just the people come out to vote. Could we do that? Could we be proactive somehow?
Yeah, we just have to beat the, we have to beat the drum.
We need to figure a way to, we need to figure a way of doing this, we, we need to figure it out.
The other alternative, the other alternative, which is something I, I wouldn't be in favor of, is we have a council with a mayor. You know, we, you know, we can't, if people aren't gonna come up, we have town meeting, the purest form of gov, of democracy left in the world, right here in, in New England towns, and people need to be aware of that and take advantage of it. We should have, we should have people outside in the streets trying to get in at Bagnell School on the twenty-seventh, that would be my wish.
And, and unfortunately, if you were to hear both sides of the story, what happens is when you hear two sides of a story, people don't feel comfortable to go and stand up and go in there and vote. That's my, only my opinion, they don't feel comfortable when there's controversy, when there's controversy.
But the ballot is very limited, unfortunately, it is.
I understand that, I'm just voicing my opinion. You know, it's, it's too bad that we have controversy like we do. I know that people are trying to do their due diligence and we have controversy. What a better way of taking it, just taking it and put it into the ballot box and have the people go in and, and vote on it in the ballot box.
Well, that's why also the second tier to that is people will rely on this board and the finance committee to help them make a decision.
I think they do now anyway, I really do.
So how we weigh in is really important.
Bill mentioned this to me, do you think having town meeting on a Saturday would draw more people?
Potentially, yeah.
Because when people get home from work and we start, I think, at seven, don't we? Maybe more people would say, you know, I can get down there, maybe if we ought, one time we did offer babysitting down there, so you bring your children and we've got some, call on the high school, the kids that do that community service, maybe we could call on them to babysit and help out, well, what is, you know, just a thought, would Saturday be a better day?
It, it's very common for communities to have a Saturday town, especially with the time, I mean, you, we start at seven for special town meeting, seven thirty. You know, you could potentially be there for hours to have voters fully informed if they're not following regular meetings.
Hours now.
Correct, so you could potentially be there, 'cause you only have one night normally scheduled, so if you did it on a Saturday.
It's true, I was, I, I've mentioned this before, I was a Mr. Mom for a few years. I didn't vote for about five or six years, I just never came up, a Saturday would work.
The other thing, the other thing I was gonna say is, I know that, you know, I hate to see when you sit here as a selectman and you see people that work hard on these committees take a beating. And I, I mean, I mean, I know Mike, I mean, Mike puts his heart and soul into what he does. But I truly think if we had the right dialogue beforehand, and I'm not blaming the committees, I'm saying if, if, when we have the candidates, like, the candidates have a chance to come in and talk and, and sell themselves or whatever you may wanna call it, no different than we should have the conservation, the preservation, everyone come in a few weeks before town meeting, you know, and what have you, and do a presentation. And, and if the people don't wanna come in, guess what, they didn't come in, they didn't get the information. And I know what you're gonna say, there's websites and there's, there's.
No, I, I wasn't gonna say that, but we did have those meetings, people just didn't show up, unfortunately. You know, all, all seven, all seven of the.
I'm saying if we had it right bef, when, this is a hot, this is a hot time of year right now, it's a hot time of year, budgets and what have you. So I think people focus in on this now rather than during the year. During the year, they think they were all doing our due diligence, we're doing our work, the committees are doing their work. You know, I just think it's a, it would be a, in my opinion, it'd be a fairer shake to have that night, you know? And that's, if we can't have the government we're gonna have, I think that would be one, one fix to it.
Well, I'll also give.
It's just my opinion.
I'll give an opinion on, on the budget. I have done the due diligence and I know we're gonna continue. I've done a lot of reading in the last week or so, that's why I'm prepared to form an opinion already. I thought long and hard about the requests for help, the highway department, the police department and the cemetery. And what I did is if I looked at the numbers, the numbers were not too, too bad, but what brought me over to the other side to agree that we should fund this budget, a balanced budget, and include To agree that we should fund this budget, a balanced budget and include. The departmental requests for help to get them to be fully staffed and staffed properly is very important. Because the highway department and the police department in their details cited things that have nothing to do with numbers, but only to do with effectiveness. And in the case of the police, better public safety. So I'm absolutely going to defend the police department's request for a full-time officer. There are compliance issues, there are legal issues and there's efficiency and public safety issues. That I'm convinced about after reading the details as to why he needed that position, that I will I will vote for that. The highway department, we have, it's it's become more and more difficult for the highway commissioner to find help. With the required licenses and to operate the equipment that we have. Now financially, what's very interesting is if, and this was prepared by Denise, thank you for that because we had asked for a summary. If you decide not to have one of the senior operators at the highway department, we can subtract thirty-nine thousand and change, but then we have to add back ten thousand. And if we decide not to fund the police officer, we have to subtract fifty-seven, but then add back in thirty-six, almost thirty-seven thousand for the reserve. So these requests for a senior and a junior operator, the highway department, police department, for a police officer. It's a little over a hundred thousand dollars, but if we add back forty-seven thousand, we're we're basically, we have a net difference of sixty something thousand.
A savings.
Save, no, an an actual expenditure. So I I'm going to support those positions and I'm also going to support the cemetery's request for help. The cemetery, I've said it a million times, is a gem, it needs to be protected. And the people who have loved ones there need to be respected. That cemetery, they do miracles down there, they need help, they need to keep it mowed, they need to keep it beautiful, they need to keep it accessible. And I don't want to mess around with having to wait for the highway department guys to see if they have some time to go do things at the cemetery. The cemetery should have its own help, the amount of money they're asking for is unbelievable, six thousand dollars. We're not talking about six million dollars here. This budget can is balanced, Denise has shown us how. You'll see the line items the department requested and what she recommends. And I will basically, if I voted for this budget tonight, I would vote for it as recommended, including the three point eight percent increase in the assessors manager salary.
Thank you.
That's my my position.
Am I correct when I say this? If you were to put the helping.
Thank you Betty, sorry.
It's going to be a save, if if we potentially put in the way, if it passed.
Right, so if you choose not to fund, so these two items were for the highway, if you only fund the senior senior operator and not fund the junior operator.
Right.
Yes, you would subtract roughly forty thousand from the salary line and add back in ten, so this, you're adding thirty thousand elsewhere, you could either use or put a reserve.
My eyes, it's a savings of.
And the same for the police, if you do not fund the full-time officer, you're saving fifty-seven, but you have to put in thirty-seven for the reserve line. Because we need to re-shift it back to cover the position, it's just reserve versus officer.
But we don't have the two, so what the savings that we would. Realize would be what if we if we didn't take a part-time highway worker and we. Did not put a full-time police officer on at this time, we would realize what?
So the police officer is about twenty thousand.
A savings of twenty?
If you do not fund the full-time, yes, it's a savings of twenty because you're putting thirty-seven back in the reserve line.
You've included all his differential, I'm sure that.
Yes, the fifty-seven thousand of the full-time includes the differential.
Okay.
Because it's, it would be the nice shift.
And health insurance?
The health insurance is a bit trickier, I did increase the or recommend increasing by a very small amount, health insurance, you really don't know. You don't know who's going to need it, what type of plan they're going to need, family, individual, so you really can't budget. You don't want to budget for everybody at the highest plan because then you're over budgeting.
So let's be conservative and budget like a single at the lowest.
Yes, so I did increase it, I did increase the health insurance by five thousand.
There's some savings there.
Correct.
Where else did we get savings, the secretary's position was what sixty or sixty-five?
Sixty-five.
Sixty-five, now we're going to hire someone at twenty.
But we're also going to hire a maintenance person too.
That's right.
The maintenance person is a wash, the maintenance person you're actually saving because we're paying twenty thousand to the cleaning service, we're recommending seventeen thousand.
So and then the the finance director's position has been increased by fifteen thousand.
Yes.
So that comes out of the.
So we're still getting a savings there, that's a pretty significant savings between the two positions.
You're saving thirty thousand on the administrative assistant line, which is used elsewhere in the maintenance.
How I look at it, and people say I'm slow, but we have put in for three overrides for snow, possibly four. I see that was, it's not a big number, we're about nine thousand in the hole.
Eighty-three hundred is the current deficit, yes.
Eighty-three hundred in the hole, and how I look at it is how I run my business and I know it's not, you can't, everyone keeps saying you can't look at it like that. But how I look at it, next year, we're starting off in deficit.
Well, no, you, we can't go into town meeting in a deficit, so that eighty-three hundred needs to be, so we will be starting next year with the zero, you know.
Zero.
You need to close that deficit.
I understand, but but I'm saying potentially what's coming on board the next fiscal year.
Yeah, I mean, you you could theoretically say that, but then the opposite would be, we're working on all the items that were deficits to our free cash. We're working on getting rid of the taxes, so you're hoping that we have a better financial position at the end of the, that you have money to then use in the budget, which we didn't have. For this year, we don't have money from free cash to use, so if we had three hundred thousand, then we wouldn't have had any issues.
And we and we need free cash. And we, it would have to have free cash.
Yes, it would.
So my point that I'm trying to make is, do, and this is, I'm not going to try and rebut what Joe said, but if it was me, I would take and say this year. I'm not going to support the extra help, maybe just one person in the highway because I can clearly see the highway needs it. And not put myself so far into debt more or less, I know I'm saying the wrong word, but let's get through this year, let's get the, let's get those accounts building again. Let's get the savings building again and then let's proceed, that's how I look at it.
And like I did speak.
I'll go tonight and I'll and I'll go through it and.
I did speak with Bob Erician, you know, I explained to him that it may not happen, one position, both positions, as I said. He said not funding either position would put him into a difficult situation because he's not able to find the right help with the licenses needed to run the equipment. So he really needs another person. If you choose to fund only one, he's asking obviously to fund the senior operator who has the additional licenses. In that case, he would still need part-time help, he still needs someone dedicated to cutting the grass, which.
Which he's had in the past.
Which he's had in the past, so he would have to add that back in, which is why the ten thousand, you know, I asked him if that's a number he can live with, he said he, you know, he'd have to, he'd see what he could do with that. He was under the impression that if he wouldn't get it this year, then maybe he'd get one next year added on. So those are the things that I did speak with him, so he is aware of his, you know, his proposal and that you may not support adding two people. And he could work with that.
Betty, what, have you thought about any?
Sure, I've been thinking about this for fifteen years, how to balance the budget every time we show up here.
Somehow we do.
Bob leased the snow, I call it the snow monster, the sidewalk plow, right? That's that's twenty-four thousand dollars a year?
Yes.
For how many years? We're going to buy it eventually, are we leased to buy?
We will own it in seven years.
Did we buy another truck to do sewer work? We didn't, okay.
They just, can they just recently, you said they just recently purchased a sewer cleaning truck.
No.
Yes, stormwater maintenance is what they, that that wasn't recent, that was before me. They took in all the stormwater maintenance work in-house.
Okay.
They don't handle the sewers in the in the highway department.
I mean, the truck that cleans the manholes.
Right, stormwater.
Stormwater, right.
It's not a new vehicle, it's not a new vehicle.
They took that in, that's one of the reasons why their senior operator with the additional licenses is so important. Because when John left us, he had the licenses to operate that, we now don't have anybody.
And the guy we just hired doesn't have.
He has the required licenses, but not all these extra licenses that we have.
Who's that?
Larry White, so he's the newest employee, correct.
And cemetery is looking for six thousand dollars for possibly two part-time summer workers?
Cemetery is looking for more than six, I was recommending, yes, they wanted eight thousand, I was recommending, so one of the situations with the cemetery is, you know, obviously. We were not fully funding cemetery operations, so in order to take that over, this year, there was nothing funded in part-time wages. So instead of funding it at the eight thousand, I met with Bob Guptel, I said, you know, could you do it six thousand, you know, two people at three thousand dollars? Obviously, anything is better than having nobody, so.
Is that for help with the mowing in the summer, so we could have a couple of perhaps high school boy, young men or college? Not young men or women, because a lot of gals want to get out and do landscaping.
So their season really starts earlier than the typical season, so their season really starts like the beginning of May because they get ready for Memorial Day. So they they run from say May through October because then they do leaf cleaning. So they're not a typical, like the highway department's season would be, you know, July to September, they're a little bit longer seasonal wise. It would be recommended to hire part-time people for shorter hours because given their extended season, we do not qualify as a seasonal employer for unemployment. So technically, if they hire somebody for that length of time.
Right.
They could file for unemployment at the end of that, because it's not season, we want to avoid that, yes.
What was the number that we, what was the number that we plugged in before, not this year, but the years before, do you have that number, what they were doing for part-time?
I I don't because they weren't budgeted last year and the year before they were in the highway department, so I don't know what it actually was, and and they weren't fully budgeting.
When I was up there as a commissioner, we had one full-timer and we had a part-timer. And the part-timer was kept to, like you said, they didn't want to let the unemployment and what have you, and the job was done. Yes, they could have used more people at times for sure, but I mean, they got the job done. And I know what's happened in the past lately is Bob's been sending guys up there to help them out, to try and get them out of the the seasons where they need the extra help. I definitely think they need a part-time up there, do I think they need an eight thousand dollar guy, I don't, I I I like to know a dollar amount, you know what I'm saying?
Right, well, that's why, you know, they were looking for two people, so that eight thousand was to cover two part-time helpers, workers. So I, well, my recommendation was six, which so you have two people at three thousand or a four hundred, depending on how many hours there.
And they, and the second, the second fold to that is unfortunately, there's not enough daily management up there, there isn't. It just, I, it was frustrating to me when I was there, he's just, you know, what they have for help there and they do their best, but there's just not enough daily management. And I'm not saying anything about the workers, they're great workers, they do the best they can do, but.
Because there is a lot of paperwork there.
Maybe the new commissioner is working on that.
Right, so I I think that that was obviously the intent when the highway department absorbed the cemetery budget. But it wasn't done officially where you moved the power of the cemetery under the highway.
Right.
So the commissioner still had a say.
Right.
The highway's paying the guys and there was sort of a who's in charge and who's mandating what projects and it just, because it was only half done.
And even an employee who who, which master do I serve, the whole idea just didn't work out.
And they both had different starting times, highway started at one time, the cemetery started at a different time and, you know, it was very confusing for the employees to, well, who do I answer to, who do I, who's a priority? Which is why it eventually got split back out.
Good.
That leaves the one full-time hire for the PD. And unfortunately, I haven't had a chance to talk with the police department about their needs over there. And I I would like to, I'd like to hear what the reasoning is at this point. I know, would you Bill?
Yeah.
Well, so if you can arrange that for us.
Would you do that tomorrow?
By tomorrow night?
Whatever, you know.
Because we have to vote by tomorrow.
Meeting here or telephone conversation?
Well, he did, he did produce a narrative as to explain why he needed the extra, so I can certainly, if you want to have, I can ask them to be here tomorrow.
I think the entire board should have that access.
Okay. And if they can't make it tomorrow night?
Well, we're under the gun tomorrow night, aren't we?
Yes.
Take that.
Yeah, I didn't get my information, I, my only information came from what I read, I went into the, because what Denise did this year was she asked all the departments to provide explicit details as to why they were requesting, what they were requesting. Now, when I read the details for the cemetery, the police and the highway, that's where I became convinced. If I looked at just the numbers, I would have said, nah, maybe not, but the rationale, which I've already stated, is what sold me, so.
What's the population of the community, I should know, but.
Sixty-four hundred.
Sixty-four? And I think there's a formula about how many full-time police officers you need regarding the population, do you know that, what that is? All right, that that's a question I would like to ask them.
Okay.
Good.
Because we take on some of these other things and it's been said that we probably will need more coverage with police and fire. Highway and on and on, right? Well, I'm satisfied at this point.
Did you want to just go over the four articles on the special town meeting warrant?
Sure.
I think there's four or five that you just haven't gone over yet. So the first article is, and I haven't numbered them yet just in case, the first article is at town meeting, at special town meeting last year. A hundred and eighty-seven thousand eight hundred was rescinded in a vote that was taken a few years prior for part of the Penntucket School Agreement. That money was originally appropriated from the stabilization fund, it was not needed, but it was not formally rescinded back to stabilization. So this article, the money was put back into stabilization, but had no vote to actually authorize that.
So it's it's physically there now?
It's physically there, but there's no vote to say it should have been in there.
Okay, so we're just.
So this is just procedural, actually the auditor's found it, so this is procedural just to make sure we can count for the money being back in stabilization.
So it's a hundred and eighty-seven thousand and eight hundred?
Yes, it is. The second article, actually the second and third and fourth articles are requests from community preservation to extend the deadlines on three projects. The first one is the conservation restrictions on existing open space. The next one is the Vito Hand Tub Museum and the third one is the Shanahan Field Bathrooms. So I I can speak to two of them and maybe Mike can just explain the conservation restrictions. The historic preservation of the Vito Hand Tub, so that was a project that was originally approved in two thousand thirteen. Nothing was done on it, I came in and it was one of these articles that was sort of left and obviously just time. Just hasn't been getting those documents together, Bob Guptel did a lot of work in putting an RFP together, it needs to be fine tuned, we need some updated plans. So that is something that hopefully will go out in the near future, it just has not gone out yet.
We call that BD before Denise?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, the Shanahan bathrooms, as you're all well aware, we have gone out to bid on that twice, both times the. The bids have come back significantly higher than the allowed amount. The plans have been scaled down, Steve has, Steve Merrill has scaled those plans down, cut back all the extras. It's really two stalls, a male and a female, I don't think we'll have any issue, but we were just waiting, I was just waiting till it gets a little bit warmer to rebid that, they obviously can't do anything while the ground is frozen. I have no prob, I don't think we'll have any issue with that being completed, but I don't know if it'll be fully paid for and all of the final items will be done by June thirtieth. Which is why we were extending it, just because it requires everything to be complete on that. And you know, if we go a few weeks over, I just didn't want to risk that. And actually, Mike, if you would just like to explain the conservation restriction piece, that would be great.
Yeah, the the reason why they're not done, these are conservation restrictions on three properties that require it. Because they were funded for one reason or another, but mostly because they were funded by with CPA funds. We're working with Essex County Green Belt on them, unfortunately, those kind of took the backseat over what was done with the properties that we purchased. Last year, so that that process is hopefully nearing completion. It turned out to be pretty complicated because there were a number of state agencies that had to weigh in on what they wanted in the conservation restriction. So that's kind of what's been done and we can't really control this, the the third party, you know, Essex County Green Belt there do what they do. And so unfortunately, it didn't get done in the time that was the two years that were a while, but it's got to be done, so I I think. We have really no choice but to extend it.
And then the last article on the special town meeting warrant is fairly standard, it's transfers to cover any initial funding shortfall. So you'll see obviously snow and ice is on there. The first one, the the North Shore Vocational Technical Assessment, so that came in higher, but there was money in Penntucket, the supplemental line. So we will move that money over. The police other wages line was an item that in order to do away with the minimum overtime requirements in the last contract negotiation you had with the police. in the last contract negotiation you had with the police union, um, you gave them a one-time payout. However, it was cut from the budget last year, even though it was a contractual item, the funding was cut. Um, so they will be short ten thousand dollars, which pays for that contractual, um, obligation. The next item is to cover the cemetery part-time wages, so that covers the deficit that currently exists in the account. And I was transferring a little bit more so that they can get through this upcoming spring season.
What was that deficit?
Uh, I, I'm requesting ten thousand. There are about sixty-eight hundred-ish, um, as a deficit. So we'll backfill that sixty-eight hundred and then give them some money to cover part-time assistance until June thirtieth. And the last item on there is, um, thirty thousand dollars from the library director's salary to the library expense line. Uh, for the first six months or so of the fiscal year, the library hired, um, several contractors to cover youth services in the director position. Those monies, because they were a vendor, had to be paid out of the expense line. Obviously, it was budgeted for those actual positions. So we're just moving the money out of the director's line to cover the money they paid out on the expense side. And those are the only special town meeting.
I have one final question. The tree warden line of, uh, ten thousand dollars.
Yes.
That's not going back into the highway.
Yeah, so this, the ten thousand dollars was not moved in its entirety from one, from the tree warden into the highway department. The highway department has said they will absorb the cost of trimming the trees or cutting down the necessary trees in their budget. So the ten thousand dollars is being recommended to just be eliminated from the tree warden budget and it's been used elsewhere.
Not, okay.
Correct, so, so, for instance.
Back in the general fund, basically.
Well, back just to use in other items, right. So for instance, if someone wanted to stand up a town meeting and ask to refund that town meeting, that tree line, you need to figure out where to take it from, cause it did not go into the highway budget. So you'd have to figure out where else to cut to refund that.
Okay. You'd have to cut.
You'd have to cut elsewhere.
Make up ten thousand dollars.
Correct.
And.
Cause that's just been used to balance.
I know where that was directed, so I'm gonna kind of carry on with it a little bit. So we, because if you know the conversation that went on today through social media. Um, do they need to go to the town meeting floor to say we're not gonna fund that tree warden department?
No, so.
So that's just.
So, well, procedurally, all you're doing is making recommendations. So everything you're voting on for the budget is simply a recommendation. The finance committee will do the same thing, but the finance committee is actually the ones to recommend to town meeting. So their numbers actually go forward to town meeting. Town meeting, though, has the ultimate say. So if town meeting wants to fund the tree warden budget, they would have to.
But is there a line?
There's a line item for tree warden budget expense, but they have to figure out where else to take it from, cause town meeting can't unbalance the budget. So if we go in with the balanced budget.
It's not on the warrant, it's not on an article, how would they see it?
I'm not following. What's not on an article? So they'll see the budget. The budget will be on the warrant.
So they'd have to, they'd have to go examine the budget to figure that out.
Correct, well, like anything, they have to look at the budget on any item, yes. So if someone wanted to fund that, you can't just then cut ten thousand out of the highway expense because we did not move it into there. They're just absorbing the services.
You can do a line item transfer from tree warden to highway. That's the bottom line. It wasn't a line item transfer.
And I would like to, I would like to say that I never stated that it was gonna be, it was pulled out of the highway and put wherever it was. I did not state that. I wanna make that publicly known. I did not state that.
Well, Bill, I'm not sure what you're referring to. I'm just looking at the budget documents. I, I didn't take any information from social media, so I'm, I'm sorry that some people are, that are criticizing you. I mean, you're trying to do the right thing.
I don't know why social media has gained so much, uh, momentum.
Well, I haven't mentioned it once until now.
I really don't.
I don't get, uh, much information from there.
I don't need it, you know? They say all sorts of things that misinformation. Is that it?
On the budget, yes. Okay.
Great, let's vote it.
So you just have, um, I think there were just two other items in your correspondence, one of which you had asked about earlier. So that was the letter from Groveland Baseball League of Board of Directors inviting you to their home opener. So that's in your packet.
When is the home opener?
I think it's April twenty-fifth, I believe.
Is that a Saturday or?
Yes. Saturday, April twenty-fifth, ten thirty, this, ten thirty AM, the festivities begin with a team parade, um, at Washington Park. April twenty-fifth.
The twenty-fifth, yeah. Ten thirty, but they start the parade around, I don't know what time.
It says ten thirty is when the festivities begin. The, the program begins at eleven. So the parade is ten thirty and the program is eleven.
Right.
Um, and then the last item is just a letter, um, regarding the Route ninety-seven project. Uh, it's from Mass DOT, um, just discussing some of the ongoing, um, needs that, um, Bob Arakely and, and town council are handling. But it's just informational.
Are they out there getting, um, liens to, on properties? Is that what's going on?
So they are looking for easements.
Easements and some permanent.
Some temporary, some permanent. Um, they, it has not been going as easy as they would like. So they have encountered some restrictions from people who are looking obviously for assessments and money, or even temporary easements. Um, so, um, right now they're going through the process of hiring. We have to hire an appraiser who's actually specializes in easements, um, that the state approves of. So they are doing that work. Uh, then we'll go back to the properties that are looking for appraisals and val, you know, money for the easements and they'll deal with those. Uh, we are, um, we were required to have the work done by April twenty fifteen.
Is that gonna work out?
No, but we're hoping that we're still within, um, the acceptable timeline. But they will not make it just because we had such a bad winter and they couldn't be out knocking on doors, uh, looking for these easements, so. And we don't think it's gonna be a problem. Council is on top of it, um, so hopefully we'll get going now that it's warmer out and better weather.
People can ask for, uh, monetary, uh, compensation?
Yes, they can.
They can?
They can. For temporary and permanent easements.
Is that like?
In some instances, you know, if they were doing the work, you know, obviously the, the area may be improved. So if they're putting in a sidewalk, you'd, you'd, they'd make green up around there.
Right.
Um, but that may not happen if, you know, we're paying people to purchase a temporary easement or even permanent. So, uh, we won't really know what the final cost will be until they go through and actually obtain all the sign-ups from all the homes impacted.
And that project's gonna be paid for, pretty much by the state, am I correct?
So.
Believe it or not, the selectman's time's though.
We do.
I actually, if I have just two quick items for mine before you get to, so just one, we already talked about. So town council has approved the, um, community preservation citizen petition article. Um, we got that back on Thursday of last week, so, um, they have approved the petition. The town clerk has approved the signatures. The language will change slightly from what the petition stated to what's legally required under the CPA law. Uh, but council has written that language, so that will go forward on the ballot. Um, the second item is more just, you know, some information to keep in mind. And I don't know if you saw in the Newburyport news, um, over the weekend, the article about, um, dog mess being left behind, especially now that snow is melting. Uh, we are having similar issues here. Um, our highway department has en, has encountered issues at VZ Park with dog mess not being picked up. Even the dog park here, people are not cleaning up. Um, we can't mow the lawn when we have those kinds of issues. Town hall, we see people all the time not clean up after their dog. Um, so it's just something to throw out there, obviously encourage residents to clean up after their dogs. We do have a bylaw requiring it. But I would say if it continues, we may have to go the route of prohibiting dogs on public property. I mean, it's unfortunate, but you know, it's, it's, the, the guys don't wanna cut the grass. People are pestering us to take care of the dog park and we just can't. We can't with our equipment go down there when people aren't cleaning up after it. So just keep that in mind. It may be something that, um, you know, we have to look at if, especially now that it's getting warmer. If people aren't cleaning up after themselves, it's, it's getting a bit difficult for us to deal with.
Do we have something in place to do a one-time spring cleanup in the dog park? As far as the highway going over and doing a one-time raking inside there?
But not that I know of.
Because I know that I wouldn't, I would, went down. I didn't go in the dog park, but I went by there and I did see quite a mess. And I saw rubbish and I saw litter. I mean, it would be nice to try and get someone to go down and do a one-time cleaning after the snow. You know, and, and then, you know, people should keep their dogs, you know, everything cleaned up, but, um, I don't know if we have that in place, but. I don't think the people are gonna go down and clean up what's there now that I saw.
Pro- probably not. Probably not.
I think I've seen around the grounds here, same thing go on. And I know people walk their dogs over to River Pines, same thing over there. So it's become a big problem.
It is, and unfortunately, like I said, now that the snow is melting, we're uncovering all sorts of stuff that's been left all winter. But now someone needs to clean and, you know, it's not, it's not appropriate for people to go and use the dog park when there's all mess left around and it's just unfortunate. It's unfortunate that that's what it's been.
And that hasn't been there that long. I don't know how long ago we approved that. That's too bad, cause we got rave reviews in the beginning.
And I think people would sorely miss it if we had to restrict, um, animal, you know, dogs being on there, if we closed it from being a dog park. But, um, unfortunately, it's, we don't have staff, we don't have time to clean up after, you know, people and their dogs. So just, that's something that, like I said, Newburyport is dealing with the same issue. Um, a lot of their public ways are impacted by this.
So was it an article about all surrounding towns or was it just a Newburyport issue and we knew it affected us?
It was just a Newburyport issue and, and we've been getting some complaints about it.
Well, Pam knows. She takes her girls down there to play. I'm sure you've encountered that many times.
Can we skate through the shortfall there?
Yeah, too bad.
So, um, Mark, Mark McCabe, who came in earlier, um, put together a petition to encourage the town to vote on the issue of reducing the Community Preservation Act from three percent down to one percent. He was successful in doing that with two hundred and forty-seven, uh, signatures. The peculiar condition is that it's going to not be an item to be debated at town meeting. It's gonna go directly to the ballot. And the reason for that is that when the CPA was created, it was created only at the ballot. Is that correct?
So the only warrant article we could find was the warrant article authorizing the Community Preservation Committee formation.
Forming the committee.
Actual tax did not go on town meeting. It went right to the ballot. So town council has advised that if that's the way it was approved, then that's why it has to be amended.
Is the research done looking for the?
Well, the town clerk has reviewed the warrant.
All right.
Um, I went to, you know, um, the assessor to find out when the CPA tax was initially installed. I went through the warrant. We could not find an actual town meeting warrant article approving the tax. The CPC committee, yes, but not the tax.
Committee, but not the tax.
Correct.
Well, just an opinion, I ju, I, I think it's unfortunate that that's the condition. I think that would've been an important thing to debate at town meeting. We can't advise, we can't speak for it or against it either now, or we won't have an opportunity at town meeting. And people now are gonna be confronted with this language on, uh, at the ballot. And here we go again, Bill. Hopefully enough people will come out and vote and understand what's going on.
But can't the pros and cons not the selectmen stand up in town meeting and talk about it?
Oh, absolutely.
So if they, if they had their committee come in, they can talk?
Well, no, I mean, there's nothing on town meeting warrant.
No.
So there's not an article on town meeting to discuss. Correct, yes.
Right, that's, that's the missed opportunity.
Correct, it's not town meeting.
But within, within the, so you're not saying is the, the, the preservation, the seat, that, those other articles aren't going to, into the ballot box?
Yeah, Mark, Mark made this effort.
They're going into the Bagnone school.
Going to town meeting.
Mark put together this petition and he can't argue it at town meeting. Really peculiar, but. It's, to me, from a pure democracy standpoint, it's kind of a letdown. It's not his fault, not anybody's fault, but I don't think he expected that either. We didn't know that.
He, he knew that before the petition started.
Oh, he did? Oh, okay.
Yes, he was advised, um, exactly what I'm telling you. He, he was advised that it never went through town meeting. That it was researched before he did the petition.
And we have no, we have no press coverage. It's another problem with this town. We have, we're very unique in that re, in that regard. People are in the dark about things.
Is that it?
Um, yeah, just one item just for knowledge again. Um, I had a request today from Lisa O'Connor. She's a school committee member.
Yes.
Um, every year she takes a volunteer effort in some fashion around town. Last year it was the pines. She organized a group to go and clean the pines. This year they are going to do JB Little Road. Um, they're looking at, actually, I believe it was the twenty-sixth of April, to organize some volunteer efforts to clean that. Um, I've spoken with the highway department, um, because apparently there's a significant amount of trash.
There's heavy dumping going on in JB Little.
Um, tires. So Bob has said that if they go through and clean it and pile it up, he will have it removed, um, on the Monday. So, so that's, you know, some nice, some nice volunteerism going on in town.
You're gonna find, I was down there. You're gonna find pieces of furniture, giant TV sets, parts of vehicles. It's a mess. It's, it's, it's really sad.
Yes, so they will, um, be taking on that on April twenty-sixth. And that's all I have.
I just have one quick item for selectman's time, if you'll.
Absolutely.
Granted.
Absolutely, go ahead.
Okay, selectman's time. This little packet represents all of the minutes from last year that, uh, have been brought current. I heard that Bill read them all. I, I, I've studied them all as well. I wanna just mention publicly that there are three meetings related to busing and the acquisition of the property that were important. That were discussed last week. For some people in town, it's very important to take a look at those. Those dates are February twenty-fourth, March twenty-fourth, and April twenty-second. I've read them all. So if it's possible to read those three and we can approve them as soon as tomorrow night, that'd be great. And then we can take another couple of weeks to approve the rest of these.
Wasn't, wasn't it the finance board that would like to?
Yeah, actually Bill, Bill Cook specifically had said, you know, a, again, he had, uh, Bill's a dedicated servant, but he was concerned, and I'd heard this before, that maybe we were withholding information, that we're withholding nothing. These just came in a week ago. I've committed hours, and I know Betty will, and I know Bill has, uh, you know, many hours to study them and review them. And even, you know, make recommendations for grammatical changes. We don't just casually look at them. But based on what Bill had requested last week, I also started fishing for those that were specifically related. That were executive session, right. Those are executive sessions related to busing. February twenty-fourth, March twenty-fourth, April twenty-second. Public documents as soon as we approved them.
What was he looking for? Was I forgot?
Well, specifically.
The land purchase.
The land purchase and how things, you know, how things were constructed and discussed. April twenty-second was the biggest one. That's when we had a very lengthy discussion and we granted an extension to allow a little bit more time because things finally did come together after a very long and protracted and dislocated process, which had nothing to do with, and really was not with us or anybody in town. Uh, we were just having difficulty on the seller's side to get things going. That's how I remember it.
Deadlines, deadlines, deadlines.
So my only comment on that is, so you have a special meeting scheduled for tomorrow night. So I don't have anything on the agenda other than the budget votes.
Okay.
I mean, technically, we're not, I wouldn't say that's an unforeseen, but if you want me to amend the agenda, I can.
What, to, to accept those, um, executive session minutes so Bill could have a look at them? If you want to. Might be a wise thing to do.
Yeah, just those three. We don't expect you to read all of these tonight, even though I know you've already been going through those.
I could sleep now.
In fairness and transparency and democracy. In the spirit of.
Was that it, Joe, for your, uh?
Yes, thank you.
Selectman's con.
Yeah, thank you.
How about you, Bill?
I'm good.
Good. Denise, you all set?
I'm all set.
We should put selectman's time more often at ten o'clock because there's not much, usually Bill and I have like twenty items.
Well, I mean, there was one. I mean, I'm, here I am thinking selectman's time is at the beginning. There was only one that I was gonna say is that I'm going to, as we get through this budget season and what have you, I'm gonna go back to the, when we talked about, when I first came, bringing the boards before us and having the dialogue with them and what have you, try and get back onto that again. We've been so busy, we haven't been able to do it.
Like every ninety days, they come and visit us. Yeah, it's a great idea.
I mean, look, the other night, we had the finance board here. I think it was all good. I think everyone understood each other. And I think, you know, amended a lot of ways. I mean, I think it's good.
It's good.
So I think we need to go back to that.
It's a good idea. Your idea, we have a policy on it. We wrote it.
You do have policies. So if you want to as a group, tell me which boards and committees, you know, I can certainly schedule.
I will when I come in. Yep.
And start scheduling people.
And the last thing is, um, just so you guys know, is I am meeting with the committee that we put together on Thursday morning at nine. On the permitting, all boards meeting on the permitting. So we're meeting with Merrimack Planning, um, to go over possibly putting together a packet.
Merrimack Planning.
Planning, commission.
Oh, M. Merrimack.
Commission, yeah. They're gonna have a representative come in, they're gonna sit with us and, and not be, not only on me, Deb Webster did a lot of the footwork on it. Um, I brought us some paperwork in. Um, I brought us some paperwork in, and I know people have been to talk to her on the committee, but we are gonna meet, um...
Good, then you can report back to, to the, to our board.
How soon is that? How soon is that meeting?
Nine o'clock Thursday morning.
This week?
This week, yep. Yep, so then we'll he, hopefully, uh, it might take a few weeks maybe, but we'll hopefully get back to you guys with some information.
You're a glutton for punishment.
Well...
It's okay.
You're non-stop right now.
We gave, Betty, Betty gave you the blessing to go ahead, so, you have to re, you know, report back to us, give us all the...
Right. Give me a project, I get it done. You gotta admit. I might go overboard, but I get it done.
You do? I admit. I admit.
Very good. That's awesome.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Yes, adjourn at ten o'clock.
Second, Bill?
Seconded.
Oh, a favor.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You guys need to sign stuff before you actually leave, so this is, um...
Let's try.
We'll do that.